The meeting is called the order was all stated with flags. We're kneeling.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in its respects.
Lois, can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
Yes. Your petition has been approved and is in sunshine of law.
Please call a roll.
Mr. Benaro.
Here.
Mr. Zambler. This is an order rider. Here. Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shore.
Here.
Mr. Medikin. Mr. Bowles.
Here.
Mr. Sinabria.
Here.
Mr. Rico.
Here. Here.
Mr. Yozin.
Here.
Mr. Ulenzak.
If I have a motion for the approval of a minutes for the September 14th, 2017 meeting?
Second.
Lois, call a roll.
Mr. Benaro.
Yes.
This is an order rider.
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore.
Take no part.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Mr. Rico.
Yes.
Chairman's comments. Just to give members a little update, next month in November is the League of Municipalities. If anybody could attend, it's a good opportunity to attend the training sessions. If you need any information, I'm sure Lois could provide the dates and stuff for you guys. Correspondence and payment of bills, are there any questions or comments? If not, under old business, we have memorialized PB 2017-05-187 Main Street Resolution. Lois, call a vote.
Mr. Benaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Anorarada.
Yes.
Mr. Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore.
Take no part.
Mr. Bowles.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Mr. Rico.
Yes.
We have PB 2017-07 Double Janus Holding LLC, 2012-2016 Double Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I represent the advocate in that matter, and based on the long agenda, I'd like to request an adjournment to your next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board.
Very well.
And can that be done without further notice?
Yes.
Yes. Thank you. And that'll be...
We'll just ask you to waive any of the hold time periods.
Absolutely, waive the time constraints. So, that'll be at seven o'clock, the second Thursday of November.
And tell everybody again that there will be no further notice.
Okay, thank you.
We have redevelopment study and preliminary investigation report for 78-102 Washington Avenue, PB 2017-04.
Good evening, Chair. I'm Don Lysel representing CME. This report that we're referring to tonight was actually submitted in July.
We're going to swear you in again, please.
Very good.
Do you swear that the testimony you were about to give will be the whole truth and not give out the truth and all we got?
I do. So, just briefly, I'll review the process, how we got to this point. City Council authorized the study of this area, which I think you're all familiar with now on the corner of Washington and William Street. It's a former used car parcel, it's four lots altogether, it's six tenths of an acre. And again, this study was commissioned or was dated July 2017. We adjourned it several times, but tonight you can make the determination of whether this is an area in need of redevelopment. So, that's what I'm here to discuss. If you have any questions, please stop me. You've been through this before, you've designated several areas, so I'll assume that you're familiar with the process. Basically, this parcel has to meet one of eight criteria that the statute lay out. And in our opinion, it meets four of those eight, and I'll touch on those just briefly. Criteria A deals with the fact that the building is unsafe, substandard, dilapidated, or obsolete. What you have is a very small cinder block structure, no power. It's been abandoned for some time, so in our opinion, the fact that it's abandoned and hasn't been used for some time meets that criteria. Criteria B is very similar. It's a vacant building, disrepair, therefore Criteria B is one we feel meets the criteria. It's an obsolete parcel, which is referenced in Criteria D. When I say obsolete, the current zone, I believe, is BG, which does not allow auto sales. So, in the miracle that somebody wanted to put an auto-related business there, they could not. So, the zoning for what was there is obsolete. New zoning is going to be recommended. So, again, we use the D criteria. And the final criteria is something that we refer to as the smart growth criteria. I refer to it as a good planning criteria. It would be good planning to redevelop this site according to standards that are listed in the statute. So, in a nutshell, that is what we're asking, is that you, as a planning board, make a recommendation to Council. It's important to note, this is considered a non-condemnation redevelopment zone. That means that the Council will not have the power to take this land from the current owner. In the past, there was not that option. You always had a condemnation component, this does not, it is not recommended. Any questions about the process, about the study?
Why does it have to be a piece of property in need of redevelopment?
Why does it have to?
Yeah, why do we have to approve this and send it to the Council?
Well, because they've asked you to. They initiated this.
So, what's the benefit out of this? What do they have?
Benefit typically is that, once it's designated as a redevelopment area, there are incentives to the owner, to the developer, designated developer, in the form of tax breaks. A redevelopment...
I need a tax break myself.
That's all negotiated outside of the realm of whether this is an area or not.
I know.
Okay.
Does any other Board members have any questions?
This site that we're talking about, this is the same site that had been approved by the zoning board, and its timeline of expiration, I believe, was June 26th.
It was this summer.
It was this summer, and then we met regarding it in July. And I believe at the time, in part of the presentation, this was discussed as being abandoned. Correct? Was it discussed as being abandoned?
You say abandoned, I don't... The plan is essentially abandoned, because it's no longer valid. It expired. Whatever was approved prior, that timeline has expired, so there's nothing that's approved for that site.
And the owner, the ownership has changed?
The ownership has changed from what it was several years ago. I know I met the owner coming in this evening, if you'd like to ask him. But, to be honest, it really doesn't pertain to whether this area is in need of redevelopment or not. It's a separate issue.
The only reason I'm asking whether it pertains or not, because the previous, it was during the time of an owner, when there was a proposal to the zoning board. And that's the reason why I asked.
But, again, that approval has now expired, it doesn't apply to this investigation. And you could not build that project now, regardless whether you approve or not approve, that's expired.
I believe we received a communication from a lawyer named Mr. Di Popolo regarding some type of a six-month extension. So, I think that needs to be brought up as part of this...
Yeah, and then Mrs. Shore is correct, as a matter of fact, we stopped the process in order to find out the status of the application front of Board of Adjustment. And since that time, two letters were received. One went to the Chairman of the Board of Adjustment, and the second one went to our construction official and zoning officer, Mr. Di Lorenzo, dated September 27th, 2017. And with the Chairman's position, may we have Mr. Di Lorenzo read this letter into the record, please?
As you may be aware, I represent 78-102 Washington Avenue, Residence LLC. You may recall that on September 12th, 2017, we made a request for extension of the site pools on the above property prior to the planning board meeting this month. As it appears that this has caused some confusion with regards to redevelopment, you should quickly withdraw our request for an extension at this time with prejudice and preserve our rights under 40, 55D, and 52.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions?
So, does it become that the extension requested of the zoning board has been withdrawn?
Yes, and the Chairman is here to clarify that.
My God. If you want to swear me in, now if you want to.
I think we could take his representation, because this letter was also read into the record at the last round. So, I believe that it is now appropriate for the Board to go forward and make a determination whether or not this area is in need of redevelopment. And I also believe that it was appropriate for the Board to adjourn the matter until this issue was clarified.
Well, we also requested to find out if we, since we assumed it was abandoned at that point, about taxes, have the taxes, did we find anything that they're paying or not paying?
I did not look that up, no. But, again, that would not pertain to whether it did some...
No, but the Board had requested a couple of items, and she said you were going to look into it, and I didn't, I don't see anything.
The ownership is what I looked into, and, again, the owner is here, you can explain how it's transpired from what it was to what it is today. As far as paying taxes, I did not look up the tax circuit.
What would be the difference, besides the tax, potential tax abatements, what would be the difference in the proposed development at that site?
What is the difference?
What would be the difference between what was proposed and just tabled, or, you know, not followed through on?
Right.
And is there a new proposed development? Would it be the same development?
I would say, what I did do is, right now, it's in the BG, Commercial Residential Mixed Use Zone, so only those uses that are in that zone would be permitted. Business, professional offices, and corporate offices, all retail sales and services, except for auto body repair, mixed-use commercial buildings in accordance with certain criteria. They do have a hotel that is as conditional use. So, all of those uses would be permitted at that site, regardless of what you do here. So, those are the uses that are permitted. And the idea behind designating an area redevelopment, you can then come up with specific criteria for that site. And your question, I think, is, are the criteria going to be the same? And as a planner, I can tell you they probably won't be, because hopefully you'll ask me to come up with a plan for that site, or our firm to do that, and we'll work with you to come up with what you think the best standards are.
I mean, to me, sitting on the Board, I don't have a problem with it. If the tool that the town needs to enhance development is tax abatement, that's great. The only thing I don't like, in a way, is that we kind of outline what we're going to put there, and then we never wind up going down that road, because we don't know what the potential developer wants to do in terms of apartments, or stores, or what types of things, because we've gone through it a few times. I think the town probably does need some tool to enhance development, and tax abatements, obviously, are one of the reasons. I don't really, I don't really follow through on all the criteria, seeing that you have just a very small guard shack out there, really, it's not an abandoned structure, so to speak.
When you look at it from the criteria that you're supposed to look at, yes, it's an abandoned structure. That's... What I've learned in doing redevelopment work in New Jersey the last 10 or 12 years is that you can really make a difference by putting new criteria on a site. What I've done is always held the developers to a higher standard. You'll hear me, if you like, come back and talk to you some more, you're going to talk, I'll talk about rebuilding, standards, energy efficient standards, proximity to transit. All of those things come into play when you develop a plan for that site, even though it's only six tenths of an acre. Again, you can get those mixed uses that you're desiring with a higher, holding the developers to a higher standard. So, that's what I like to do with these documents, once you move them along, and hopefully you'll get to see that.
You've stated previously that you're going to be recommending soon a new zoning condition?
Well, what would happen, if you designate it as an area in need of redevelopment, and Council says, "We agree", typically what they do is then ask that a plan be developed for that parcel.
I understand, but it sounded like you already had something in mind.
No, what I'm saying is, I don't have in mind putting back exactly what has just expired. That's what I would say. I'm sure there are elements that might be considered, but to rubber stamp what was there previously approved, it's not what you're going to see. You may see, you know, I would think a mixed-use building would be nice there, just off the top of my head, but not whatever the criteria was that was approved by the zoning board two and a half years ago.
I just have a little bit of a problem with this, because for 20 years now, we've been saying we were building something there, and it's never happened.
Excuse me, Troy Ward. Can you take your conversation outside? Yeah, do us a favor, so we can hear what's going on. Thank you very much.
My concern is that the project went before zoning, because it wasn't in a designated zone at the time for residential, therefore, we needed, it needed to go before zoning for an appeal, for an approval, which expired in June. Fortunately, or unfortunately, we're dealing with the fact that there was a misuse of, by whoever owned it, or currently owns it at the time, that was deemed to be inappropriate, though it had functioned that way for years, while, two years ago, the zoning board proceeded to say, though that area was not designated because of the appeal and the project, eventually, after a number of weeks, the zoning board approved. So, that's what I find to be confusing. It was a car lot, but it wasn't supposed to be a car lot. But, as we remember, by the way, we've always had nothing but a string of car lots at that part of Washington Avenue. But, it wasn't approved. In the meantime, the zoning board approves an area that was not designated as commercial, but it was a BG, not residential, so they go before the zoning board, the zoning board approves, but now that's run out, so now it's coming before us for a mixed use, which I'm not, I'm not in opposition to mixed use. That's not my issue. Nor am I against development or redevelopment, but this whole situation is, what's the difference between a six-month extension within zoning, or all of a sudden, why is it coming to us? And it would be wonderful to see something, rather than unfortunately, something like the Lincoln Motel on Washington Avenue. You know, we don't want something that's in hourly rate, so certainly we would want something respectable, but given the amount of land that we have there, and so many people are talking about saturation, I don't know, I'm just confused by this whole thing. I need more clarification. And it's not, I'm not criticizing in any way our desire for a greener approach to things. I just, it's the whole package that is confusing me, that's all.
Just to clarify, residential use is allowed at that location. It has to be part of a mixed-use building. And the density for that is only up to eight units per acre, so you've got six tenths of an acre. Conceivably, you could put five residential units there under the current zoning. I'm sure the request back two years ago was a lot more units than that.
And it was approved.
And it was approved. So, but to be clear, residential is permitted at this location now, as part of BG zone, as a partial mixed-use development.
But not during the time of the application two years ago?
Yeah, no, it wasn't. But, again, you could have only put five units there, at the most.
All right, understood.
Does any other members have a question? If not, we'll open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public have a question? What is?
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut. I've listened to the, I was, I guess, a couple of months ago is when you initially presented this. And basically, the criteria that you were seeking to meet was, you know, very interesting, that it was unsafe now, and it is vacant, well, yes, it's an empty parcel of land. And that you pointed to the fact that vehicles were cutting through it, because I guess there's no chain, you know, marking that property as do not cross, and anything on a corner will be used today as a pass-through. It's a level lot, and people cut through it. So, I mean, that was a real reach, in my opinion. And obsolete, it's a vacant, it was misused, there was never any zoning allowed for used car dealership, although it was illegally used that way, and grandfathered in, so there it sat. Now, then it was considered possibly for senior housing, I believe, going backward, is that what it is? And if it, but 80 units per acre is the mixed-use concept that we're throwing around here on six tenths of an acre? I mean, that's a lot of density. And in recent times, this Board, end tax abatements have been offered to the SoHo Hospital and other properties that are now going to bring a lot of residential to Belleville, as this inundated the entire county, neighboring towns all around us. We're looking at what it's costing the taxpayers in terms of children entering the school system, and requirement for services to be expanded as this population base continues to expand. And now, the idea that incentives to the developer are to seek tax abatement, to add more residential, exacerbating all the problems of a small town with very limited access roads going through it, which now, I live one block off of Belleville Avenue. I can't get out of my street in the morning. I'm also one block from Garden Avenue. It's a constant flow of traffic during rush hours that don't allow you to move. I mean, we're pretty much coming down to right turn only during business hours. It's really becoming, you know, impossible to negotiate your own town, that is supposedly a residential town, historically, that accommodates a certain percentage of population in its infrastructure. Well, the infrastructure is so stretched, Board, and so stretched out now, that it simply isn't accommodating the present density.
Sir, would you mind if our expert responds to some of your comments, please?
Certainly.
Which one would you like me to respond to?
Density is a big aspect.
There's no density proposed here, sir. What we're saying is, the density at the project before was about 80 units, which would put it at 160 units per, if it had been approved, whatever. But that approval...
As opposed to eight units?
Yeah. Not even eight.
Right.
Not even eight, less than eight, is what's permitted now.
But you did mention just now that you would consider, you know, re, once again, introducing that former plan.
No, no, that's not what I said at all, sir.
Didn't you just say that?
Well, it sounded like that.
I said that wasn't part of the... This is just a study. This is a little study, but it doesn't have a use yet.
But the study is, is basically the incentive idea that tax abatements would be sought, that would transfer that tax requirement of any residential onto the existing tax base.
Let me just say this. This Board has no jurisdiction about tax abatements, and we're looking at a narrow issue, and you could help us on this. The issue is, does this property satisfy sufficient criteria under the redevelopment statute for this Board to make a recommendation to the Mayor and Town Council to look into it further as a redevelopment area? There is no zoning at this time, there is no density at this time that we're looking at.
There's BG zone, correct?
Would you like to...
That is correct.
So, that is a commercial application zoning on that property now?
That's the zoning now, but having this as a redevelopment zone would give everybody another...
And I'm speaking to the redevelopment. I'm suggesting to you that you not find this an area in need of redevelopment, considering that recent times have shown commercial development on that block, more than half of that block, moving south toward Newark. On that side of the street, has been developed in market forces from contractors who sought and found reason to develop that block commercially, and which gives us taxes as a business, does not put children into the system, no residential, and that's the present zoning. And I believe it should stay that way, because, you know, the mixed use, it turns out to be a 600-square-foot, you know, building on the first floor, and then five stories of residential.
Because we have some other applications, we're going to put you down as against the idea of redevelopment.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'd like to finish. I can't continue with my own words, so do you have to shut me off?
You have to ask me questions.
I wouldn't call it a...
Okay.
Over what I testified to, that's what you're supposed to do.
Yeah, we have to really keep it in, you can ask him questions as to what his testimony is, and you know, we're not trying to shut anyone off.
Right, well, you're suggesting smart growth. Can smart growth include the restriction to strictly BG, where we develop commercially?
Smart growth is one of the eight criteria mentioned, and it's part of a statute where it lists certain items that are... I can read them to you if you'd like, but it's the one that I like, least because it's the most ambiguous. I mean, it's not very clear. But let me say what those are. So, what a smart growth criteria does, it encourages the following: mixed land uses, compact clustered community design, range of housing choice and opportunity, walkable neighborhoods, distinctive attractive communities offering a sense of place, open space, farmland, and scenic resource preservation, future development strengthened and directed to existing communities, provision of a variety of transportation choices, making development decisions predictable, fair, and cost-effective. And the last one is encouraging citizen and stakeholder participation in development decisions. So, if the site offers those opportunities, it qualifies under this smart growth criteria. So, and to the effect that it does, basically, this lot is a gateway to the downtown area. I walked it today, I actually walked down to Mill Street, walked back. It's got a fairly high elevation, if a four or five-story building is there, you'd have nice views. But, again, it meets the criteria in that it offers the opportunity to provide some of those items that I just listed.
Well, once again, I'd like to state to the Board that what we need is businesses that bring us ratables, not drain the, and more tax requirement to compensate for any residential that would be basically necessitated by a desire for tax abatements.
The town still gets a share of taxes, though, you know that, right?
Well, the existing tax base is what picks up any differential. So, either you pay the freight based on the taxes required, you know, per square foot, like is existing, or there's any relief whatsoever, and that, you know, those services and any children, that all comes back to the existing tax base who has to compensate.
There's one thing, though. Very often, I see that whole idea put before the planning board, as if we have some say in what type of abatement, or how much the abatement will be, or how much the current taxes paid on that vacant lot are compared to what they would pay even if they hadn't abated.
Well, finding an area in need of redevelopment is your business, though.
Well, that is, and I think that's a good tool to rezone a certain area, so that we could get some development done. But the right board to be in front of, if you want to argue about an abatement, would be the city, the town council.
And will certainly do that, but not for existing zoning.
Participate in.
But the existing BG zoning for business is exactly what it should be. And so, to alter that by this Board considering it as changing the zoning to accommodate the developer who's seeking tax abatements, is, I believe, not in your, in the town's best interest.
And listen, we are all taxpayers, and I'm not opposed personally, opposed to some incentive for development. But that's not this...
Not our concern.
Neither do I. I mean, and I, we shouldn't be voting for or against development based on a tax abatement.
No, but residential development is very expensive and exacerbates the problems that are infrastructured.
Well, can I be honest with this, too, because I've been a few years on the Board? I keep hearing every time there's a residential development, how the schools are, we have increased enrollment, but I've yet to see any proof of that, from anybody. but I've yet to see any proof of that from anybody.
Well, it's yet to land. You have, how many apartments are going to suffer?
Well, no, I'm trying, my point is, are there really increases in the enrollment in the schools that are putting in development?
Certainly is. In the township of Nutley, the neighboring town has an additional 1,000 children entering the district now. They have a $70 million bond referendum that they're looking at.
Well, part of that is due to lack of investment for decades, too, in these towns, where natural education is-
No, no, there's a thousand new heads. Did you hear that? A thousand new heads are entering the Nutley district.
Well, there is population. The town of Belleville isn't going to stay stagnant in a world population that's growing, so we should kind of plan for that.
We're not stagnant.
We shouldn't be.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
What, you're not, you're not taking this into account?
Check the Bureau of Statistics.
What about the, what about the additional housing that you've authorized? It has yet to cover a huge-
We're really getting a little stuck here.
The point is, is that our school district is not growing. The data's there, public data. The town population is not growing. In fact, it is decreasing.
It is not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's 37,000 people.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact. That's all I'm saying, Jeff. It's not an opinion, it's a fact. I've done the research, you can do the research, to suggest that we are overcrowded and anything that we develop is inappropriate because of overcrowding.
No, 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 housing.
It's not true, or our schools overcrowded.
I'm sorry, but the mayor just recently stated, we're now a town of 37,000. We're traditional 36, recently. So now, according to other studies that have been brought before the boards and the council.
Well, I've looked at official statistics for the last six to seven years. We are stagnant as a population.
And the school system.
And the school system as well. And that's data, it is not my opinion. Those are the numbers.
But when these houses come online, I'm just, we do have a lot of housing that has been authorized, okay, that's coming online in the near future. That is going to produce, and certainly, the traffic is horrendous in this area. And it's very tight. This is a town of 2.3 square miles when you remove the county property. 37,000 people, according to the mayor.
We got to move on, Mr. Manley.
Go right ahead.
Anybody else, Mr. Frank Antoni?
I'm sorry, Chuck, I forgot your name.
Call me Don, remember, that's right.
Don, talking about that car lot was unauthorized, illegal.
It was probably called a non-conforming use. It was probably there for a long time before it closed. And now, since it's been closed for a year, it can't reopen as a car lot.
Right, but are you aware that it was there legally?
Well, I did not go back that far, sir.
Well, I can tell you, because I was involved, it was an original car lot that goes way back, one lot.
Before Zerling?
Then it expanded, the owner allowed to expand it. And this is personal information. I personally made a complaint to Mr. DiLorenzo that the owner was using the corner lot on William, the bigger lot, to expand this car lot. Mr. DiLorenzo gave him a violation. He went before the zoning board, and the zoning board approved it.
They refused that.
So that car lot was not illegal. It was legal, approved. One was grandfathered in because it was there for 15 years ago when I came to town, and before that. And the other portions were allowed by the zoning board. In fact, that same owner, that original owner, owned a four-unit apartment house with four stores underneath. It burned in the 90s. I have the videos of all that fire. And then he expanded the car used there. But then he went before the zoning board, got approval to make the whole lot. So just so the record shows, this was not an illegal use of it. He went through the channels after Mr. DiLorenzo violated him.
If I use the term illegal, then that was inappropriate. But it's a non-conforming use based on the zoning that's there today, the BG zone.
Yes, we agree. That's it. But I just want the record to show, because Ms. Shaw, I believe she mentioned to her that it was illegal and shouldn't have been there at all. But it was legal, the zoning board approved it. And in regards to Mr. Conti, about the, you believe the town, you know, needs the tools to redevelop. I don't know how long you've been in town, but are you aware of Lower Washington Avenue? Are you aware of it five years ago? Are you aware of it when Obama killed the car industry? We had nice big old motors. Big old motors closed up, not because they wanted to, not because in that business, I bought cars. My father bought all his cabs over there. He was thrown out. But what happened? Within a year or two, a developer took it over and he built. He took it over, cleaned it up. Family Dollar, Nacho's Hardware Store, a national chain built there. No pilot, didn't have to be declared an area in need of redevelopment. What's next door to it? Popeye's Chicken, again, a national chain. They didn't need redevelopment authority, didn't have to come before the planning board, you know, to get their approval. Next to that, you have a nice big laundromat, big commercial laundromat. No pilots, no authorization area in need of redevelopment. You go to Cleveland Street, you got Solar Domeno, a nice restaurant, which is packed. You can't get in there on the weekends and all that. No pilot, didn't have to be declared an area in need of redevelopment. The second house in from Cleveland Street burnt down. They got permission by, I believe, the zoning board to rebuild. While they were building it, about a year, year and a half ago, it was signed all over. The first all-green building in Assis County. We didn't need to declare an area in need of redevelopment or nothing like that. The branchwood manor, where I got married, you're familiar with that? That was abandoned, it was abandoned, he went out of business, right? The Dollar Tree comes in, another national company. The miles of the build, branch of brand of it. We didn't need an area in need of redevelopment to that. Right next to there, you know, the old Ledwood Auto Body? A building that disrepair, my friend owned it. He was in his 80s, he lost it to foreclosure. My other friend, the Immerschick Building, he has antique cars that he rents to the movies, millions of dollars in there. I negotiated the sale without permission, I got my two friends together. The one friend bought it from him, put a second floor. Have you been in there? Millions of dollars' worth of cars in there. No redevelopment, area in need of redevelopment. It's not the Immerschick Building, a beautiful building, if you bothered to look at that. You go up and down, there's Dr. Sid Ali in that old gas station right across the street from where Big Low is most. No area in need of redevelopment, you know, we didn't need all this. No pilot, none of these big, big developments need pilots. We're getting, you know, I complimented Councilman Kennedy because we're getting a little sick and tired of these tax abatements and pilots and areas in need of redevelopment. And the reason why, you can tell, an attorney can say, this is not your purview, but you are the tool. The town council cannot declare a pilot or a tax abatement unless you folks, the planning board, declares an area in need of redevelopment. So that's what's going on here, and that's where we're at.
And we recommend it, Mr. Antoni.
Now, I could go, I don't want to take much more time.
We recommend it, it's the council that declares. We make a recommendation.
Exactly.
You said we don't, we don't.
But you were, Mr. Manley, you were making it appear you rejected him, that you have nothing to do with this. You do, you are part of that tool. The town council cannot give a tax abatement or a pilot unless the planning board declares it an area in need of redevelopment.
Unless we recommend it, right?
Again, and what I'm telling you, and I will, I have the whole map of the two blocks coming from north. We have project development, next to Carl's, I think you all lived in Belleville. Next to Carl's Appliances, remember that? General bought the old Tiger Hardware Store, renovated, put apartments. Then he comes back and he gets approval to build three townhouses in the backyard. So I was against it, but fine, he built them. No pilot, no area in need of development, he did it legally. So this is, I'll sum up at the end there. This is questioning the witnesses. But to the criteria, Don.
Yes.
You use criteria A. The buildings, let me read. According to the, and I go back before the area in need of redevelopment statute, you used to quote the BLIGHT statute, you're recalling. So I fought the town in that when they wanted to do it, and we won back then. So I'm complaining. Says the general bounty of buildings are standard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidate or possess any characteristics, so lacking light airspace as to be conducive to wholesome living. That what the statute says? And you use the criteria A. Number one, that dilapidated building, you call, was an office for used car lots, 10 by 20. It's the size of my kitchen, and it wasn't a dwelling unit.
And it meets the criteria. It's dilapidated, it's deteriorated, it's unoccupied.
You know, words, words are important. It says conducive to wholesome living, right? Nobody was living in there. It was an office for a used car lot. And you also use criteria B, the discontinuance of use of the buildings. It wasn't voluntary, the tenant was evicted. He just recently, like I stated earlier, had gotten permission to use the entire parcel for cars. So he was addicted, it didn't happen that this because of the downgrading of the township and all. Nobody wanted to use this site and all that. So I don't believe that qualifies either if you consider the real facts of what's going on here in Belleville. D, you're saying that D qualifies. The dilapidation, the overcrowding of the property. You've got over half an acre and you've got 200-square-foot building. Where's that overcrow, over, excessive land coverage? Where's excessive land coverage? It's vacant land other than that building there. What really is there, it's owner neglect and it's lack of code enforcement out there. One of the pictures show, there's a bunch of broken glass there. Well, that's not an area in need of redevelopment. That means even the building department didn't see it, wasn't told of the problem. It's just a matter of code enforcement. If he gets a letter, usually, you know, like, see, I'm a contractor, can't get it all the time, the building department do 10 days to clean it up. So that's not an area in need of redevelopment, that's code enforcement. And finally, you're using criteria H, smart growth, which I hope the public understands. This was something the politicians in Trenton added on just to accommodate developers. It really has nothing to do with the original BLIGHT statute. This is another scam that can perpetrate under people in New Jersey. It's smart growth, fine. If you want to use the smart growth criteria, well, it's already proven that that area, the zoning board approved it for smart growth, allowing 80 units to there. So once again, there is no reason to declare this an area in need of redevelopment. All of those four criteria are all foreign ones. And Don, I sympathize with you because you must have the courage to get up here and really stretch these four criteria to try to make it appear there. But if you're good people who live in Belleville, and I thank again Councilman Kennedy, I hope he's against this. And Mrs. Shaw, you had some concerns with this, and you're very puzzled why this approved project, and by the way, it was approved three times. It was approved in January of '06, in May of '07, and then in '15, a year and a half ago.
I think, Mr. Frank Antoni, one of the reasons it was never done was because without encouragement with redevelopment, it wasn't financially sensible to do it. And that's why the building, it's been sitting there vacant for all these years. And I think the council wants to see something put there. We don't need all that vacant land on Washington Avenue. If someone wanted to put a warehouse or a commercial building, if it was financially viable, I think they would have did it. So we're trying to have a tool to get positive development into our town, to bring more taxes into our town. That's an empty lot. I don't know what they're paying, but I'm sure it's minimal what they're paying. And whatever goes there is going to pay substantially more. Even with a pilot program or a tax abatement, it'll pay substantially more than what's being paid now.
Mr. Manley, maybe you weren't paying attention. All that development and the lower two blocks are what, the worst blocks are what?
Even the Harrison or Carney, all the redevelopment's going on in there, around the path station, around the new stadium, all of, that's all redevelopment.
I work in so much, I got family there, you know, with their taxes have gone through the roof because of development, right?
If they didn't have development, what are their taxes being?
But let's stick to the issue here. That whole area has been redeveloped without being declared an area of redevelopment. So if this owner really wants to make money, instead of making money and let the taxpayers subsidize him, he can, and he'll sell. Everybody's doing business down there.
Where?
Up the Lower Washington Avenue. Family Dollar, the Dollar Tree, Popeye's Chicken, my friend owns those other cars. The doctor's office, in fact, I get calls three, four times a week from the doctor office, one of our phone numbers is different. I get calls for his office all the time, he's very busy. But, so there's no reason to declare it an area of redevelopment.
Mr. Frank Antoni, one difference between the developments you mentioned, a lot of them were existing structures that were renovated. There's a large cry to renovate an existing structure. The car dealership, the Dollar Store, well, the Dollar Store, because of its condition, was almost new construction. But a lot of the things you're talking about are renovations. This isn't a renovation, it's a rather large development.
The dealership, he's not down.
Bigelow was renovated, Bigelow was renovated.
And he put in addition, made a big parking lot, more parking than these, it's really parking. The branchwood manor was demolished.
That was a renovation.
Right? It's here. But this can be done, and the proof that it can be done, because it was approved.
It wasn't built, it wasn't built.
It wasn't, well, look, you declared School One area in need of development. It was approved for 16 units, he never built. It was approved 36 units right across from School One and Rucker Street, approved, and with all that money, our tax dollars spent to do that, he never built.
Taxpayers' dollars spent to do that? I think the developers paid for any studies.
Yeah, it's true. We're paying our town employees to do this. Our building inspector, Mr. DiLorenzo, has to take the time-
These are covering salaries from the developers.
Well, he's got a job, he's doing this. But there is no reason to declare that. When we have an area, and it was the worst part of Washington Avenue in the last few years, it's back, private development. This guy can build private development and he'll make money. And by the way, and I have one of yours, Mr. Conti there. The, when you do a pilot program, the Board of Education gets no money. Number one, the pilots usually, it's a much bigger discount, usually about 30% of what the taxes should be. The town gets 95, the municipal government, the county gets 5%. The Board of Education gets nothing from pilot programs.
That's something that could be worked out.
Well, the point is here, I hope enough of you, I hope enough of you have the courage to know that this is just a deal to give the taxpayers the benefit to make more dollars more. And the rest of us, including you, if you're taxpayers or renters, whatever you are, we're going to pay and subsidize these things.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience have a question of this witness?
Just calling because I got a letter saying that they want to knock down the redeveloped ice and put up a 7-Eleven.
That's been postponed. We moved that to next month, if you'd like to hear that, it's going to be next.
Why wouldn't they notify us that it was postponed?
At the beginning of the meeting, they made, we made an announcement.
Well, I got the letter two days ago.
Due to how much stuff is on our agenda, they decided to postpone it to next month.
It would be nice if you let us, you know.
May I just say, this was not the applicant's responsibility. We're running much later than we thought because of this, and that's just not going to be reached tonight. So it's going to be carried to next month. But it was not the applicant's fault in any way.
What time is that, next month?
Seven o'clock, second Thursday. Lois, you have the date?
November the 9th.
November the 9th?
Yes.
I own the building, 112, you have the right next to it.
Okay, you want me to come next month and listen to what we have to say?
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should have been notified at least 10 days before.
I got the letter a few days ago in mail.
Well, if you can bring it here with a stamp on it.
All right, well, it's home, I have it.
All right.
All right, though.
Any other people in the public have a question?
November 9th, right?
Yes.
My hearing isn't just that, I'm sorry.
That's okay. If not, we'll close the public portion. Would someone like to make a motion?
Wait, 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 what about testimonies? That was for questions. Public have a right to get testimonies. I mean, I want to get testimonies, the whole thing. I just want to clear something up, and it has nothing to do with his testimony. That's why I wasn't asking any questions.
Look, let me ask you this. If you're going to give testimonies, then we'll have you sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'm sworn.
Please, to help you, to say your name, please.
Talio Valgershio, E. Grove Street in Belleville, Chairman of the Zoning Board. To make things straight, and Ms. Shore is a little misunderstood there, she thought it was for a six-month extension. He was asking for a two-year extension. He was asking for, now, the rule is you could ask for up to three one-year extensions. And technically, this is expired, but not forever. I'm going to tell you why. For up to those three years ending, he could come anytime asking for an extension, and it goes retroactive to when this allegedly or technically expired. So really, there's three more years here where he can come. However, if the case is decided as an area in need of redevelopment, it comes out of the zoning board's jurisdiction and goes into your jurisdiction and the council's jurisdiction. The only time it would come back before us is if they propose something and it's rejected by both the planning board, or it's approved by the planning board and rejected by the council. Then he could come back for a hearing before the zoning board because it's not being approved what he wants to put. And then it would come back before us.
And ask for a variance.
And ask for a variance, exactly. And Mr. Frank Antoni was right, there was a variance given for the parking lot. And he's also right that the person was thrown out. The person that was, owned the property was leasing it to the person who had the used car lot, and they didn't extend the lease and let him go because they wanted to build this project. And that's how it was. And I know as of 2015, the person who owns the property now was a part owner. He ended up selling it after then. Well, actually, not selling it. He bought the full hundred percent of the property. He was a part owner. Whatever he was a part owner in 2005, I'm not sure, but as of two years ago, he was definitely a part owner. And then he bought up his, bought out his other partner. That's how it all works. Okay? So if there's any questions, you could ask me. But that's how this fell into place. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have testimony they'd like to give? Not, we'd like to close the public portion. Someone like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the redevelopment study, declaring this an area in need of redevelopment? Development motion?
Second.
Second. Lois, call the roll.
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mrs. Inorgarada.
No.
Councilman Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Conti.
No.
Mr. Walsh.
No.
Mrs. Shore.
No.
Mr. Bow.
No.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
No.
Okay, thank you. Under new business, we have update master plan and amend the zoning ordinance.
Me also. This evening, I brought copies for all of you, gave them to Mr. DiLorenzo, we will give them to you for distribution. Rather than print copies of these documents, it's a draft, if you would like me to email you either the master plan update or the ordinance changes, your name, print it, and I will send it to you tomorrow. You don't have to take, if anyone wants to do that, you can pass it along. If you don't have a pen, I have one.
So what are you going to talk about now?
So, well, what I want to talk about is that.
We don't have it.
You don't, you have, you, you have it if.
I have it, and you're going to talk about it. I don't want that. I want it before you talk about it.
Okay, that's fine. Well, what, what I've asked for is that a public hearing be held on the ninth. Now that you have it, you have a month to review it, the public has a month to review it, rather than me talk about it now.
All right.
Because it is, it is somewhat complex, but it is, hopefully, the two documents should, should support each other.
Well, we'll see what happens when we get them.
But again, if, if, if you're on the planning board and you'd like an electronic copy, it would be much easier for me to process your comments. I did this with Ms. Shore when she commented on, she was on the steering committee, so the comments were very easy to incorporate when I had to written electronic mail. So I wouldn't, I only have a few email addresses for you. I don't want to text you on your cell phone. If you would give me your email addresses, I would be glad to email these documents to you. Because there will be revisions, and to just print forty pages of documents that we're going to throw away because they need to be revised, just doesn't make sense to me. So that's, that's what I'm requesting. You have the documents as of today. I've asked the public if they want the documents.
You have them, but you don't have them.
You have them, but you don't have them. That is correct.
You don't have them.
So, again, on, on the ninth is the, the time for me to expound on the contents, and I'll have your feedback, and hopefully it will be productive and concise.
Well, I hope we, I hope we don't get them on the ninth.
No, they're in, they're in Frank's office right now. And again, you'll get them electronically if you'll share your email address. That was the whole point of, of asking to be on the agenda, to say this is the formal distribution of this material, and you can comment on it next month.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I request that all copies of this get sent to the board, the zoning board members for review?
If you'd like, sure.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, and when we come back, I'm going to recuse myself of the next application, so five minutes. The meeting is called order, we're supposed to state the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the great soul of liberty and justice.
Lois, can you read the statement of certification of the meeting?
Yes. I should have read it. I've been advertised to the Sunshine Law.
Please call the roll.
Mr. Benira.
Here.
Mr. Zambis. Mrs. Inorgarada.
Here.
Councilman Kennedy.
Here.
Mr. Conti.
Here.
Mr. Walsh.
Here.
Mrs. Shore.
Here.
Mr. Medikin. Mr. Bow.
Here.
Mr. Sinabria.
Here.
Ms. Rico.
Here.
I'll cut you first. Here.
Mr. Yazi.
Here.
Mr. DiLorenzo.
If I have a motion for the approval of amendments for the September fourteenth, two thousand and seventeenth meeting?
Second.
Lois, call the roll.
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mrs. Inorgarada.
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore.
Take no part.
Mr. Bow.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
Yes.
Chairman's comments. Just to give members a, a little update, next month in November is the League of Municipalities. If anybody could attend, it's a good opportunity to attend the training sessions. If you need any information, I'm sure Lois could provide the dates and stuff for you guys. Correspondence and payment of bills, are there any questions or comments? If not, under old business, we have memorialized PB two thousand seventeen oh five, one eighty-seven Main Street Resolution. Lois, call a vote.
Mr. Benira.
Yes.
Mrs. Inorgarada.
Yes.
Mr. Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shore.
Take no part.
Mr. Bow.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
Yes.
We have PB two thousand seventeen oh seven, Bellevle Janus Holding LLC, two thousand twelve dash two thousand sixteen, Bellevle Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I represent the applicant in that matter, and based on the long agenda, I'd like to request an adjournment to your next regularly scheduled meeting of the board.
Very well.
And can that be done without further notice?
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. And that'll be.
We'll just ask you to waive any of the time constraints.
Absolutely, waive the time constraints. So that'll be at seven o'clock, second Thursday of November.
Right, and tell everybody again that there'll be no further notice.
Okay, thank you.
We have redevelopment study and preliminary investigation report for seventy-eight dash one oh two Washington Avenue, PB two thousand seventeen oh four.
Good evening, Chair. I'm Don Mizell, representing CME. This report that we're referring to tonight was actually submitted in July.
We're going to swear you in again, please.
Very good.
Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give will be all truth and not give out the truth without being up?
I do. So just briefly, I'll review the process, how we got to this point. City Council authorized the study of this area, which I think you're all familiar with now on the corner of Washington and William Street. It's a former used car parcel, it's four lots altogether, it's six tenths of an acre. And again, this study was commissioned or was dated July in two thousand seventeen. We adjourned it several times, but tonight you can make the determination of whether this is an area in need of redevelopment. So that's what I'm here to discuss. If you have any questions, please stop me. You've been through this before, you're designated several areas, so I'll, I'll assume that you're familiar with the process. Basically, this parcel has to meet one of eight criteria that the statute lay out. And in our opinion, it meets four of those eight, and I'll touch on those just briefly. Criteria A deals with the, the fact that the building is unsafe, substandard, dilapidated or obsolete. What you have is a very small cinder block structure, no power, it's been abandoned for some time, so in our opinion, the fact that it's abandoned and hasn't been used for some time meets that criteria. Criteria B is very similar. It's a vacant building, disrepair, therefore, criteria B is one we feel meets the criteria. It's an obsolete parcel, which is referenced in criteria D. When I say obsolete, the, the current zone, I believe, is BG, which does not allow auto sales, so in the miracle that somebody wanted to put an auto-related business there, they could not. So the zoning for what was there is, is obsolete. New zoning is going to be recommended. So again, we use the D criteria. And the final criteria is, is something that we refer to as the smart growth criteria. I refer to it as the good planning criteria. It would be good planning to redevelop this site according to standards that are listed in the, in the statute. So in a nutshell, that is what we're asking, is that you, as a planning board, make a recommendation to council. It's important to note, this is considered a non-condemnation redevelopment zone. That means that the council will not have the power to take this land from the current entity. In the past, there was not that option. You always had a con, had a condemnation component, this does not, does not recommend it. Any questions about the process, about the study?
Why does it have to be a, a piece of property in need of redevelopment?
Why does it have to?
Yeah, why do we have to, why do we have to approve this and send it to the council?
Well, because they've asked you to. They initiated this.
So what's the benefit out of this? What's the benefit?
Benefit typically is that, once it's designated as a redevelopment area, there are incentives to the owner, to the developer, designated developer, in the form of tax breaks, a redevelopment.
I need a tax break myself.
That's, that's all negotiated outside of the realm of whether this is an area or not.
I know.
Okay.
Does any other board members have any questions?
This site that we're talking about, this is the same site that had been approved by the zoning board, and its timeline of expiration, I believe, was June twenty-sixth.
It was this summer.
It was this summer, and then we met regarding it in July. And I believe at the time, in part of the presentation, this was discussed as being abandoned. Correct? Was it discussed as being abandoned?
You say abandoned, I know, the, the plan is essentially abandoned because it's no longer valid. It expired. Whatever was approved prior, that timeline has expired, so there's nothing that's approved for that site.
And the, the owner, the ownership has changed?
The ownership has changed from what it was several years ago. I, I know, I met the owner coming in this evening, if you'd like to ask him. But to be honest, it really doesn't pertain to whether this area is in need of redevelopment or not. It's a separate issue.
The only reason I'm asking whether it's pertaining to that because these previous, it was during the time of, of an owner when there was a proposal to the zoning board. And that's the reason why I asked.
But again, that, that approval has now expired, it doesn't apply to this investigation. And you could not build that project now regardless whether you approve or not approve, that's expired.
I believe we received a communication from a lawyer, I mean, Mr. DiCapolo, regarding some type of a six-month extension. So I think that needs to be brought up as part of this.
Yeah, and then, uh, Mrs. Shore is correct, as a matter of fact, we stopped the process in order to find out the status of the application in front of the board adjustment. And since that time, two letters were received. One went to the chairman of the board of adjustment, and the second one went to our construction official and zoning officer, Mr. DiLorenzo, dated September twenty-seventh, two seventeen. And with the chairman's position, may we have Mr. DiLorenzo read this letter into the record still?
As you may be aware, I represent seventy-eight, dash one oh two Washington Avenue, Residents LLC. You may recall that on September fourth, two thousand seventeen, we made a request for an extension of the certain tools on the above property prior to the planning board meeting this month. As it appears that this has caused some confusion with regards to redevelopment, respectfully withdraw our request for an extension at this time with prejudice and preserve our rights under forty fifty-five D dash fifty-two.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So, does it become that the extension requested of the zoning board has been withdrawn?
Yes, and the chairman is here to clarify that.
If you want to swear me in.
I think we could take his representation, because this letter was also read into the record at the last round. So I, I believe that it is now appropriate for the board to go forward and make a determination whether or not this area is in need of redevelopment. And I also believe that it was appropriate for the board to adjourn the matter until this issue was clarified.
Well, we also requested to find out if we, since we assumed it was abandoned at that point, about taxes, have the taxes, did we find anything that they're paying or not paying?
I, I did not look that up, no. But again, that, that would not pertain to whether it did some.
No, but the board had requested a couple of items, and she said you were going to look into it, and I didn't, I don't see anything.
The ownership is what I, what I looked into. And again, the owner is here, he can explain how it's transpired from what it was to what it is today. As far as paying taxes, I did not look up the tax circuit.
What would be the difference besides the tax, potential tax abatements? What would be the difference in the proposed development at that site?
What is the difference?
What would be the difference between what was proposed and just tabled or, or, you know, not followed through on?
Right.
And what, what is, is there a new proposed development? Would it be the same development?
I would say, what, what, what I did do is, right now, it's in the BG, Commercial Residential Mixed Use Zone, so only those uses that are in that zone would be permitted. Business, professional offices and corporate offices, all retail sales and services, except for auto body repair, mixed, uh, mixed-use commercial buildings in accordance with certain criteria, that you have a hotel that's a conditional use, so all of those uses would be permitted at that site regardless of what, what you do here. So those are the uses that are permitted. And the idea behind designating an area of redevelopment, you can then come up with specific criteria for that site. Your question, I think, is, are the criteria going to be the same? And as a planner, I can tell you, they probably won't be, because hopefully you'll ask me to come up with a plan for that site, or our firm to do that, and we'll work with you to come up with what you think the best standards are.
I mean, to me, sitting on the board, I don't have a problem with it. If the tool that the town needs to enhance development is tax-abating, that's great. The only thing I don't like, in a way, is that we kind of outline what we're going to put there, and then we never wind up going down that road, because we don't know what the potential developer wants to do in terms of apartments, or stores, or what types of things, because we've gone through it a few times. I think the town probably does need some tool to enhance development, and tax-abatements, obviously, are one of the reasons. I don't really, I don't really follow through on all the criteria, seeing that you have just a very small guard shack out there, really. It's not an abandoned structure, so to speak.
When you look at it from the criteria that you're supposed to look at, yes, it's an abandoned structure. That's, what I've learned in doing redevelopment work in New Jersey the last 10 or 12 years is that you can really make a difference by putting new criteria on a site. What I've done is always held the developers to a higher standard. You'll hear me, if you'd like, come back and talk to you some more, you're going to talk, I'll talk about rebuilding, energy-efficient standards, proximity to transit, all of those things come into play when you develop a plan for that site, even though it's only six tenths of an acre. Again, you can get those mixed uses that you're desiring with a higher, holding the developers to a higher standard. So that's what I like to do with these documents, once you move them along, and hopefully you'll get to see that.
You've stated previously that you're going to be recommending soon any zoning condition?
Well, what would happen, if you designate it as an area in need of redevelopment and council says, we agree, typically what they do is then ask that a plan be developed for that parcel.
I understand, but it sounded like you already had something in mind.
No, what I'm saying is, I don't have in mind putting back exactly what has just expired. That's what I was saying. I'm sure there are elements that might be considered, but to rubber stamp what was there previously approved, it's not what you're going to see. You may see, you know, I would think a mixed-use building would be nice there, just off the top of my head, but not whatever the criteria was that was approved by the zoning board two and a half, three years ago.
I just have a little bit of a problem with this, because for 20 years now, we've been saying we were building something there, and it's never happened.
Excuse me, for your order. Can you take your conversation outside? Yeah, do us that favor, so we can hear what's going on. Thank you very much.
My concern is that the project went before zoning, because it wasn't in a designated zone at the time for residential, therefore we needed, it needed to go before zoning for appeal, for an approval, which expired in June. Fortunately, or unfortunately, we're dealing with the fact that there was a misuse of, by whoever owned it, or currently owns it at the time, that was deemed to be inappropriate, though it had functioned that way for years, while, two years ago, the zoning board proceeded to say, though that area was not designated because of the appeal and the project, eventually, after a number of weeks, the zoning board approved. So that's what I find to be confusing. It was a car lot, but it wasn't supposed to be a car lot. But as we remember, by the way, we've always had nothing but a string of car lots at that part of Washington Avenue, but it wasn't approved. In the meantime, the zoning board approves an area that was not designated as commercial, but it was a BG, not residential, so they go before the zoning board, the zoning board approves, but now that's run out, so now it's coming before us for a mixed use, which I'm not, I'm not in opposition to mixed use. That's not my issue. Nor am I against development or redevelopment, but this whole situation is, what's the difference between a six-month extension within zoning, or all of a sudden, why is it coming to us? And it would be wonderful to see something, rather than unfortunately something like the Lincoln Motel on Washington Avenue. You know, we don't want something that's in hourly rate, so certainly we would want something respectable, but given the amount of land that we have there, and so many people are talking about saturation, I don't know, I'm just confused by this whole thing. I need more clarity.
Just to clarify.
And it's not, I'm not criticizing in any way our desire for a greener approach to things, I just, it's the whole package that is confusing me, that's all.
Just to clarify, residential use is allowed at that location. It has to be part of a mixed-use building. And the density for that is only up to eight units per acre, so you've got six tenths of an acre, conceivably you could put five residential units there under the current zoning. I'm sure the request back two years ago was a lot more units than that.
And it was approved.
And it was approved. So, but to be clear, residential is permitted at this location now, as part of BG zone, as part of mixed-use development.
During the time of the application, two years ago?
Yeah.
It was?
But again, you could have only put five units there, at the most.
All right, understood.
Does any other members have a question? If not, we'll open it up to the public. Does anybody in the public have a question? What is?
Jeff Mattingly, 56 Walnut. I've listened to the, I was, I guess a couple of months ago is when you initially presented this, and basically the criteria that you were seeking to meet was, you know, very interesting that it was unsafe now, and it is vacant, well, yes, it's an empty parcel of land, and that you pointed to the fact that vehicles were cutting through it, because I guess there's no chain, you know, marking that property as do not cross, and anything on a corner will be used today as a pass-through, it's a level lot, and people cut through it. So I mean, that was a real reach, in my opinion. And obsolete, it's a vacant, it was misused, there was never any zoning allowed for used car dealership, although it was illegally used that way and grandfathered in, so they're accepted. Now, then it was considered possibly for senior housing, I believe, going backward, is that what it is? And it, but 80 units per acre is the mixed-use concept that we're throwing around here on six tenths of an acre? I mean, that's a lot of density. And in recent times, this board and tax-abatements have been offered to the SoHo Hospital and other properties that are now going to bring a lot of residential to Belleville, as it's inundated the entire county, neighboring towns all around us. We're looking at what it's costing the taxpayers in terms of children entering the school system, and requirement for services to be expanded as this population base continues to expand. And now the idea that incentives to the developer are to seek tax abatement, to add more residential, exacerbating all the problems of a small town with very limited access roads going through it, which now, I live one block off of Belleville Avenue, I can't get out of my street in the morning, I'm right also one block from Garden Avenue, it's a constant flow of traffic during rush hours that don't allow you to move. I mean, we're pretty much coming down to right turn only during business hours. It's really becoming, you know, impossible to negotiate your own town that is supposedly a residential town, historically, that accommodates a certain percentage of population in its infrastructure. Well, the infrastructure is so stretched, board, and so stretched out now, that it simply isn't accommodating the present density.
Sir, would you mind if our expert responds to some of your comments, please?
Certainly.
Which one would you like me to respond to?
Density is a big aspect.
There's no density proposed here, sir. What we're saying is, the density at the project before was about 80 units, which would put it at 160 units per, if it had been approved, whatever.
Right, as opposed to eight units.
Not even eight. Not even eight, less than eight, is what's permitted now.
But you did mention just now that you would consider, you know, re, once again, introducing that former plan.
No, no, that's not what I said at all, sir.
Didn't you just say that?
No, it sounded like that. I said that wasn't part of the, this is just a study, this, but it doesn't have a use yet.
But the study is, is basically the incentive idea that tax-abatements would be sought, that would transfer that tax requirement of any residential onto the existing tax base.
Let me just say this, this board has no jurisdiction about tax-abatements, and we're looking at a narrow issue, you could help us on this. The issue is, does this property satisfy sufficient criteria under the redevelopment statute for this board to make a recommendation to the mayor and town council to look into it further as a redevelopment area? There is no zoning at this time, there is no density at this time that we're looking at.
There's BG zone, correct?
That is correct.
So that is a commercial application zoning on that property now?
That's the zoning now, but having this as a redevelopment zone would give everybody an opportunity.
And I'm speaking to the redevelopment, I'm suggesting to you that you not find this an area in need of redevelopment, considering that recent times have shown commercial development on that block, more than half of that block, moving south toward York. On that side of the street has been developed in market forces from contractors who sought and found reason to develop that block commercially, and which gives us taxes as a business, does not put children into the system, no residential, and that's the present zoning, and I believe it should stay that way, because, you know, the mixed use, it turns out to be a 600-square-foot, you know, building on the first floor, and then five stories of residential.
Because we have some other applications, we're going to put you down as against the idea of redevelopment.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Well, I'd like to finish, I can't continue with my own words, so do you have to shut me off?
You have to ask me questions.
Okay.
Over what I testify to, that's what you're supposed to do.
Yeah, we have to really keep it in, you could ask him questions as to what his testimony is, and you know, we're not trying to shut anyone off.
Can smart growth include the restriction to strictly BG, where we develop commercially?
Smart growth is one of the eight criteria mentioned, and it's part of a statute where it lists certain items that are, I can read them to you if you'd like, but it's the one that I like least, because it's the most ambiguous. I mean, it's not very clear, but let me say what those are. So what a smart growth criteria does, it encourages the following: mixed land uses, compact clustered community design, range of housing choice and opportunity, walkable neighborhoods, distinctive attractive communities offering a sense of place, open space, farmland, and scenic resource preservation, future development strengthened and directed to existing communities, provision of a variety of transportation choices, making development decisions predictable, fair, and cost-effective, and the last one is encouraging citizen and stakeholder participation in development decisions. So if the site offers those opportunities, it qualifies under this smart growth criteria. So, and to the effect that it does, basically this lot is a gateway to the downtown area. I walked it today, actually walked down to Mill Street, walked back, it's got a fairly high elevation, if a four or five-story building is there, you'd have nice views, but again, it meets the criteria in that it offers the opportunity to provide some of those items that I just listed.
Well, once again, I'd like to state to the board that what we need is businesses that bring us ratables, not drain and more tax requirement to compensate for any residential that would be basically necessitated by a desire for tax-abatements.
The town still gets its share of taxes, though, you know that, right?
Well, the existing tax base is what picks up any differential, so either you pay the freight based on the taxes required, you know, per square foot, like is existing, or there's any relief whatsoever, and that, you know, those services and any children, that all comes back to the existing tax base who has to compensate.
There's one thing, though, very often I see that whole idea put before the planning board as if we have some say in what type of abatement, or how much the abatement will be, or how much the current taxes paid on that vacant lot are compared to what they would pay even if they hadn't abated.
Well, finding an area in need of redevelopment is your business, sir.
Well, that is, and I think that's a good tool to rezone a certain area so that we could get some development done, but the right board to be in front of, if you want to argue about an abatement, would be the city, the town council.
And will certainly do that, but the existing zoning.
Participate in.
But the existing BG zoning for business is exactly what it should be, and so to alter that by this board considering it as changing the zoning to accommodate the developer who's seeking tax-abatements is, I believe, not in your, in the town's best interest.
And listen, we are all taxpayers, and I'm not opposed personally, opposed to some incentive for development, but that's not this.
Not our concern.
Neither are I. We shouldn't be voting for or against development based on a tax-abatement, that's a different.
No, but residential development is very expensive and exacerbates the problems that are infrastructure.
Well, kind of the other with this, too, because I've been a few years on the board, I keep hearing every time there's a residential development, how the schools are, we have increased enrollment, but I've yet to see any proof of that.
Well, it's yet to land. How many apartments are going to serve?
Well, no, I'm trying, my point is, are there really increases in the enrollment in the schools?
Certainly is. In the township of Nutley, the neighboring town has an additional 1,000 children entering the district now, they have a $70 million bond referendum that they're looking at.
Well, part of that is due to lack of investment for decades, too, in these towns, where that's a work of education issue.
No, no, it's a thousand new heads. Did you hear that? A thousand new heads are entering the Nutley district.
Well, there is population, the town of Belleville isn't going to stay stagnant in a world population, that's growing, so we should kind of plan for that.
We're not stagnant.
We shouldn't be.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
Yes, we are.
What, you're not, you're not taking into account.
Check the Bureau of Statistics.
What about the, what about the additional housing that you've authorized? It has yet to come.
We're really getting off the subject there.
The point is, is that our school district is not growing, the data's there, public data, the town population is not growing, in fact, it is decreasing.
It is not.
Yes, it is.
There were 37,000 people.
It's not an opinion, it's a fact. That's all I'm saying, Jeff, it's not an opinion, it's a fact. I've done the research, you can do the research, to suggest that we are overcrowded, and anything that we develop is inappropriate because of overcrowding.
No, 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 no.
It's not true. Nor are our schools overcrowded.
I'm sorry, but the mayor just recently stated, we're now a town of 37,000, we're traditional 36, recently, so now we're, according to other studies that have been brought before the boards and the council.
Well, I've looked at official statistics for the last six to seven years, we are stagnant as a population.
And the school system.
And the school system as well, and that's data, it is not my opinion, those are the numbers.
But when these houses come online, I'm just, we do have a lot of housing that has been authorized, okay, that's coming online in the near future. That is going to produce, and certainly, the traffic is horrendous in this area, and it's very tight. This is a town of 2.3 square miles when you remove the county property, 37,000 people according to the mayor.
We got to move on, Mr. Mattingly.
Go right ahead.
Anybody else, Mr. Frant Anthony?
I'm sorry, I forgot your name.
You can call me Don, remember? That's right.
Don, talking about that car lot was unauthorized, illegal use.
It was probably called a non-conforming use. It was probably there for a long time before it closed, and now, since it's been closed for a year, it can't reopen as a car lot.
But are you aware that it was there legally?
Well, I did not go back that far, sir.
Well, I can tell you, because I was involved, it was an original car lot that goes way back, one lot.
Before zoning?
Then it expanded, the owner allowed to expand it. And this is personal information, I personally made a complaint to Mr. DiLorenzo that the owner was using the corner lot on Williams, the bigger lot, to expand this car lot. Mr. DiLorenzo gave him a violation, he went before the zoning board, and the zoning board approved it.
He refused that.
So that car lot was not illegal, it was legal, approved, one was grandfathered in, because it was there for 15 years ago when I came to town, and before that. And the other portions were allowed by the zoning board. In fact, that same old. In fact, that same owner, that original owner owned a four-unit apartment house with four stores underneath, it burned in the 90s, I have the videos of all that fire, and then he expanded the car and used it there, but then he went before the zoning board and got approval to make the whole lot. So, so the record shows this was not an illegal use of it. He went through the channels after Mr. DiLorenzo violated him.
If I used the term illegal, then that was inappropriate, but it's a nonconforming use based on the zoning that's there today, the BG zone.
Yes, we agree.
Okay.
That's it, but I just want the record to show, because Ms. Shaw, I believe she mentioned to her that it was illegal and shouldn't have been there at all, but it was legal, the zoning board approved it. In regards to Mr. Conti, about the, you believe the town, you know, needs the tools to redevelop. I don't know how long you've been in town, but are you aware of Lower Washington Avenue? Are you aware of it five years ago? Are you aware of it when Obama killed the car industry? We had nice big old motors, big old motors closed up, not because they wanted to, not because they didn't have business. I bought cars, my father bought all his cabs over there, he was thrown out, but what happened? Within a year or two, a developer took it over, and he built, he took it over, cleaned it up, Family Dollar, Nacho's Hardware Store, a national chain, built there, no pilot, didn't have to be declared an area needing redevelopment. What's next door to it? Popeye's Chicken, again, a national chain, they didn't need redevelopment authority, didn't have to come before the planning board, you know, to get their approval. Next to that, you have a nice big laundromat, big commercial laundromat, no pilots, no authorization, area needing redevelopment. You go to Cleveland Street, you got Solar Domeno, a nice restaurant which is packed, you can't get in there on the weekends and all that, no pilot, didn't have to be declared an area needing redevelopment. The second house in from Cleveland Street burnt down, they got permission by, I believe, the zoning board to rebuild. While they were building it, about a year, year and a half ago, it was signed all over, the first all-green building in Assis County. We didn't need to declare an area needing redevelopment or nothing like that. The branch of matter, where I got married, you're familiar with that? That was abandoned, it abandoned, he went out of business, right? The Dollar Tree comes in, another national company, demolishes the building, branch of matter, we didn't need an area needing redevelopment to that. Right next to there, you know, the old Ledwood Auto Body, a building had dis-repaired, my friend owned it, he was in his 80s, he lost it to foreclosure. My other friend, the Immersy Building, he has antique cars that he rents to the movies, millions of dollars in there. I negotiated the sale without permission, I got my two friends together, the one friend bought it from him, put it second floor, have you been in there? Millions of dollars worth of cars in there, no redevelopment, area needing redevelopment, it's now the Immersy Building, a beautiful building, if you bothered to look at that. You go up and down, there's Dr. Sid Ali in that old gas station right across the street from where Big Low is, no area needing redevelopment, you know, we didn't need all of it, no pilot, none of these big, big developments need pilots. We're getting, you know, I complimented Councilman Kennedy because we're getting a little sick and tired of these tax abatements and pilots and areas needing redevelopment, and the reason why, you can tell, an attorney can say, this is not your purview, but you are the tool, the town council cannot declare a pilot or a tax abatement unless you folks, the planning board, declares it an area needing redevelopment.
Pleasure.
So that's what's going on here, and that's where we're at.
And we recommend it, Mr. Frant Antoni.
Now, I could go, I don't want to take much more time.
We don't declare, we recommend it, it's the council that declares, we make a recommendation.
Exactly.
Yeah, well, you said we don't declare it, we don't declare it.
But you were, Mr. Manley, you were making it appear you rejected to him that you have nothing to do with this. You do, you are part of that tool. The town council cannot give a tax abatement or a pilot unless the planning board declares it an area needing redevelopment.
Unless we recommend it, Francis.
Again, and what I'm telling you, and I will, I have the whole map of the two blocks coming from north.
Yeah, most of us are familiar with the area. We're just trying to concentrate on this area, this one lot.
Next to Carl's Appliances, remember that? General bought the old type of hardware store, renovated, put apartments, then he comes back and he gets approval to build three townhouses in the backyard. So I was against it, but fine, he built them, no pilot, no area need development, he did it legally. So I'll sum up at the end there, this is questioning the witnesses, but to the criteria, Don.
Yes.
You used criteria A, the buildings, let me read, according to the, and I go back before the area needed redevelopment statute, you used the BLIGHT statute to recall it.
I listened to the word.
So I fought the town in that when they wanted to do it, and we won back then, so I'm complaining. It says the general value of buildings is standard, unsafe, unsanitary, dilapidate or possess any characteristic, so lacking light airspace, as to be conducive to wholesome living. Is that what the statute says?
I believe you.
And you use criteria A. Number one, that dilapidated building you called was an office for used car lots, 10 by 20, it's the size of my kitchen, and it wasn't a dwelling unit.
And it meets the criteria. It's dilapidated, it's deteriorated, it's unoccupied.
You know, words, words are important. It says conducive to wholesome living, right? Nobody was living in there, it was an office for a used car lot, and you also use criteria B, the discontinuance of use of the buildings. It wasn't voluntary, the tenant was evicted. He just recently, like I stated earlier, had gotten permission to use the entire parcel for cars, so he was addicted, it didn't happen that this because of the downgrading of the township and all, nobody wanted to use this site and all that, so I don't believe that qualifies either if you consider the real facts of what's going on here in Bellevue. D, you're saying that D qualifies, the dilapidation, the overcrowding of the property, you've got over half an acre and you've got 200 square foot building, where's that overcrow, over that? Excessive land coverage, where's excessive land coverage? It's vacant land other than that building there. What really is there, it's owner neglect, and it's lack of code enforcement out there. One of the pictures show, there's a bunch of broken glass there. Well, that's not an area needing redevelopment, that means the building department didn't see it, wasn't told of the problem, it's just a matter of code enforcement. If he gets a letter, usually, you know, like, see, I'm a contractor, can't get all the time, the building department gives 10 days to clean it up, so that's not an area needing redevelopment, that's code enforcement. And finally, you're using criteria H, smart growth, which I hope the public understands, this was something the politicians in Trenton added on just to accommodate developers. It really has nothing to do with the original BLIGHT statute. This is another scam that's perpetrated under people in New Jersey. It's smart growth, fine, if you want to use the smart growth criteria, well, it's already proven that that area, the zoning board approved it for smart growth, allowing 80 units to there. So once again, there is no area, no reason to declare this an area in need of redevelopment. All of those four criteria are all foreign ones, and Don, I sympathize with you, because you must have the courage to pick it up here and really stretch these four criteria to try to make it appear there, but if you're good people who live in Bellevue, and I thank again Councilman Kennedy, I hope he's against this, and Mrs. Shaw, you had some concerns with this, and you're very puzzled why this approved project, and by the way, it was approved three times. It was approved in January of '06, in May of '07, and then in '15, a year and a half ago.
I think, Mr. Frant Antoni, one of the reasons it was never done was because without encouragement with redevelopment, it wasn't financially sensible to do it, and that's why the building, it's been sitting there vacant for all these years, and I think the council wants to see something put there. We don't need all that vacant land on Washington Avenue. If someone wanted to put a warehouse or a commercial building, if it was financially viable, I think they would have did it. So we're trying to have a tool to get positive development into our town, to bring more taxes into our town. That's an empty lot, I don't know what they're paying, but I'm sure it's minimal what they're paying, and whatever goes there is going to pay substantially more, even with a pilot program or a tax abatement, it'll pay substantially more than what's being paid now.
Mr. Manley, maybe you weren't paying attention. All that development and the lower two blocks are what, the worst blocks are what?
I mean, the Harrison or Carney, all the redevelopment's going on in there around the Pab Station, around the new stadium, all of, that's all redevelopment.
I work in zone out, I got family in zone out, you know what their taxes have gone through the roof because of that development?
If they didn't have development, what are their taxes being?
But let's stick to the issue here, that whole area has been redeveloped without being declared an area of redevelopment. So if this owner really wants to make money, instead of making money and let the taxpayers subsidize him, he can, and he'll sell, everybody's doing business down there.
Where?
Up the Lower Washington Avenue, Cameron Dollar, the Dollar Tree, Popeye's Chicken, my friend owns those other cars, the doctor's office, in fact, I get calls three, four times a week from the doctor's office, one of our phone numbers is different, I get calls for his office all the time, he's very busy, but, so there's no reason to declare it an area of redevelopment.
Mr. Frant Antoni, one difference between the developments you mentioned, a lot of them were existing structures that were renovated. There's a bar cry to renovate an existing structure, the car dealership, the dollar store, well, the dollar store because of its condition was almost through construction, but a lot of the things you're talking about are renovations. This isn't a renovation, it's a rather large building.
What are you talking about, renovation?
The dealership is not down.
Bigelow was renovated, Bigelow was renovated.
And he put in a ditch and made a big parking lot.
It was renovation.
More parking than needs, it's really parking, the branch of matter was demolished.
That was a renovation.
Right? It's here, but this can be done, and to prove that it can be done, because it was approved.
No, it wasn't built, it wasn't built.
It wasn't, well, look, you declared school one area needing redevelopment, it was approved for 16 units, he never built. It was approved 36 units right across from school one on Rucker Street, approved, and through all that line, our taxpayers' dollars meant to do that, he never built.
Taxpayers' dollars meant to do that? I think the developers paid for any studies.
Yeah, it's true, we're paying our town employees to do this, our building inspector, Mr. DiLorenzo, has to take the time.
Those fees that cover their salaries from the developers, but let's move on, let's stick to the topic.
Well, he's got a job, he's doing this, but there is no reason to declare that. When we have an area, and it was the worst part of Washington Avenue, in the last few years, it's back, private development. This guy can build private development and he'll make money. And, by the way, and one of yours, Mr. Conti there, the, when you do a pilot program, the board of education gets no money. Number one, the pilots usually, it's a much bigger discount, usually about 30% of what the taxes should be. The town gets 95, the municipal government, the county gets 5%, the board of education gets nothing from a pilot program.
That's something that could be worked out.
Well, the point is here, I hope enough of you, I hope enough of you have the courage to know that this is just a deal to give the taxpayers the benefit to make millions of dollars more, and the rest of us, including you, if you're taxpayers or renters, whatever you are, we're going to pay and subsidize these things.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience have a question of this witness?
Just calling because I got a letter saying that they want to knock down the redevelopment and put up a 7-Eleven.
That's been postponed. We moved that to next month, if you'd like to hear it act, it's going to be at next month.
Why wouldn't they notify us that it was postponed?
At the beginning of the meeting, they made, we made an announcement.
Well, I got the letter two days ago.
Due to how much stuff is on our agenda, they decided to postpone it to next month.
It would be nice if we let us, you know...
But may I just say, this was not the applicant's responsibility. We're running much later than we thought because of this, and that's just not going to be reached tonight, so it's going to be carried to next month, but it was not the applicant's fault in any way.
What time is that, next month?
Seven o'clock, second Thursday. Lois, you have the date?
Yes, it's the November 19th.
November the 9th?
Yes.
I own the building 112, you have a right next to it.
Okay, you're welcome to come next month and listen to what we have to say.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You should have been notified at least 10 days before.
I got the letter a few days ago in mail.
Well, if you can bring it here with a stamp on it.
All right, well, I have it.
All right.
It's not right, though.
Any other people in the public have a question?
It's November 9th, right?
Yes.
My hearing isn't just...
That's okay.
Sorry.
If not, we'll close the public portion. Would someone like to make a motion?
Wait, 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 what about testimony? That was the question. Public have a right to get testimony? I mean, I want to get testimony, the whole thing. I just want to clear something up, and it has nothing to do with his testimony, that's why I wasn't asking any questions.
Let me ask you this, if you're going to give testimony, then we'll have you sworn, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, I'll run you sworn.
Yeah.
Please, to help you better. May your name please?
Tilio Del Gershul, E. Groome Street in Bellevue, chairman of the zoning board. To make things straight, and Ms. Shaw is a little misunderstood there, she thought it was for a six-month extension, he was asking for a two-year extension. He was asking for, now, the rule is, you could ask for up to three one-year extensions, and technically, this is expired, but not forever, I'm going to tell you why. For up to those three years ending, he could come anytime, asking for an extension, and it goes retroactive to when this allegedly or technically expired. So really, there's three more years here where he can come. However, if the case is decided as an area needing redevelopment, it comes out of the zoning board's jurisdiction and goes into your jurisdiction and the council's jurisdiction. The only time it would come back before us is if they propose something and it's rejected by both the planning board, or it's approved by the planning board and rejected by the council. Then he could come back for a hearing before the zoning board because it's not being approved what he wants to put, and then it would come back before us.
And ask for a variance.
And ask for a variance, exactly, and Mr. Frant Antoni was right, there was a variance given for the parking lot, and he's also right that the person was thrown out. The person that owned the property was leasing it to the person who had the used car lot, and they didn't extend the lease and let him go because they wanted to build this project, and that's how it was, and I know as of 2015, the person who owns the property now was a part owner. He ended up selling it after that, well, actually not selling it, he bought the full 100% of the property, he was a part owner. Whatever he was a part owner in 2005, I'm not sure, but as of two years ago, he was definitely a part owner, and then he bought up his, bought out his other partner. That's how it all worked, okay? So if there's any questions, you could ask me, but that's how this fell into place, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the public have testimony they'd like to give? Not, we'd like to close the public portion. Someone like to make a motion to accept the recommendation of the redevelopment study declaring this an area in need of redevelopment? Developmental motion?
So moved.
Second? Second. Lois, roll the roll. Yes.
Mrs. Inoradah.
No.
Councilman Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Conti.
No.
Mr. Walsh.
No.
Mrs. Shaw.
No.
Mr. Bowe.
No.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Reka.
No.
Okay, thank you. Under new business, we have update master plan and amend the zoning ordinance.
Me also. This evening I brought copies for all of you, gave them to Mr. DiLorenzo, we will give them to you for distribution. Rather than print copies of these documents, Mr. Drath, if you would like me to email you either the master plan update or the ordinance changes, put your name, print it, and I will send it to you tomorrow. You don't have to take, anyone who wants to do that, you can pass it along, if you don't have a pen, I have one.
Somebody want to talk about it now?
So, well, what I want to talk about is that... So, well, what I want to talk about is that.
We don't have it.
You don't, you have, you have it if.
I have it after you're going to talk about it. I don't want that. I want it before you talk about it.
Okay, that's fine, well, what I've asked for is that a public hearing be held on the ninth, now that you have it. You have a month to review it, the public has a month to review it, rather than me talk about it now.
All right.
Because it is, it is somewhat complex, but it is, hopefully, the two documents should support each other.
Well, we'll see what happens when we get them.
But again, if you're on the planning board and you'd like an electronic copy, it would be much easier for me to process your comments. I did this with Ms. Shore when she commented on, she was on the steering committee, so the comments were very easy to incorporate when I had the written electronic mail, so I wouldn't, I only have a few email addresses for you. I don't want to text you on your cell phone. If you would give me your email addresses, I would be glad to email these documents to you. Because there will be revisions, and to just print forty pages of documents that we're going to throw away because they need to be revised, just doesn't make sense to me. So that's, that's what I'm requesting. You have the documents as of today. I've asked the public if they want the documents.
We have them, but we don't have them.
You have them, but you don't have them. That is correct.
You don't have them.
So, again, on the ninth is the time for me to expound on the contents, and I'll have your feedback, and hopefully it will be productive and concise.
I hope we don't get them on the ninth.
No, ma'am, they're in Frank's office right now.
But.
And again, you'll get them electronically if you'll share your email address. That was the whole point of asking to be on the agenda, to say this is the formal distribution of this material, and you can comment on it next month.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I request that all copies of this get sent to the zoning board members for review?
If you'd like, sure.
Thank you.
We're going to take a five-minute recess, and when we come back, I'm going to recuse myself with the next application, so. Five-minute. Yeah.
Okay, we will be hearing the continuation of 11 Franklin Avenue, block 2301, Lot One. It's preliminary and final site plan and major subdivision plan. I'd like to know if everyone read the transcripts. We're all up to date so we can vote. Yes.
Well, let's find out, was everyone here last time?
No, no.
All right, so then we're going to have to let you certify on the record.
I'm certifying on the record that Arlie Shore, I read the transcript.
You're certified, all right.
Anyone else?
I know that, thank you, Ted.
Okay, so.
Please proceed. Thank you. Lisa John Bossa with law firm Keys, Shikini, and Jan Tamafi on behalf of the applicant, 11 Franklin Redeveloper LLC. We're here tonight for a continuation of a hearing that began in September in connection with 11 Franklin Avenue, the former Hoffman La Roche site. At the time of the hearing, our professionals presented their testimony, all of the hearing was closed out but for traffic. The board wanted to engage their own traffic expert to take a look at our consultant's findings and issue a report. That has now been done, and we are here to listen to the findings of the report and to address it sufficiently.
And we agree that the only issue we're addressing this evening is traffic?
Correct.
Mr. Hertz, would you be sworn, please?
You swear to tell the truth and the whole truth and help the truth to help you, God?
I do. Okay, if, I'm sure you all remember, but I couldn't make the last meeting, kind of checking on my daughter down in Florida after those hurricanes, but she ultimately got deployed to Puerto Rico, she's on the hospital boat now, but, and anyway, after that meeting, I called Frank to see what happened at the meeting, and when he explained to me what was going on, I talked to the applicant's engineer and told him that we would like to see a, the board really needs to see a traffic report for a full build-out of that site because of their, and that would, I felt, would justify the, the excel at these lanes that the board might be looking for. So I, I asked John Jar, who wrote this report, he's Brightview Engineering, he's the, I used to work with him at Mazer. He left there, he starts his own company, but he's, just so you know his qualifications, he's a PE and he's also the traffic engineer for a number of planning zoning boards in the state of New Jersey. So he had a conflict tonight so he couldn't make it, so that's why I'm giving this spiel. So basically, if you, if you go through his report, John doesn't have a problem with the board approving the site plan for the two uses that they're proposing, self-storage, and I think it was a CBS or.
A pharmacy.
Pharmacy, okay. What, what he did in his report, and you'll see highlighted comments, is that if, if this applicant comes in for another use, a site plan for another use in that property, there's a number of recommendations that he's going to want to see from the applicant's traffic engineer so that he can properly review that for whatever next uses that you, that they come into, okay? Now, the, we spoke to the applicant's engineer and if you, and I think they'll do it, they'll testify or, you know, testify to it that they, they, they agreed to, to provide a ten-foot road widening easement on Mill Street and Franklin Avenue for, if the county or the town wants to widen those roads, we'll have that ability to do that, and it will not affect their project. From what, also from what I understand is that they are going to move some signs around so that if that road widening takes effect, there will be no C variances associated with any signs or buildings on that site.
And who's going to pay to widen the roads? Us?
No, if we require it, it would be the applicant's obligation.
Oh, all right, so we require them.
You're going to remember Franklin Avenue is a county road, so.
Well, they can let Chief Tomaso, he can get that done.
I'm sure he can do anything.
You know, so, I don't want to hear this, you know? I'm not voting for this unless these roads are widened. So, we can keep going.
Okay. And, again, it's, we can recommend it, but the county's approved, you know, based, you know, the county's got to approve the road one, and the other recommendation in the report is that any meetings that the applicant has with the county's traffic engineer or the county, that we'd like to be present at that so that we can reinforce the town's position at the same time they're, you know, giving the county their position. So hopefully, I think that's kind of really summarizes what's going on here and.
Mr. Hertz, as our expert, do you believe that these recommendations constitute a planning?
Recommendations of our traffic engineer?
Yes.
Yes.
And would you recommend these then to the board?
Yes, I would.
And you ask that if the board goes forward this application, that the conditions that you outlined be made part of the resolution?
Yes. Again, with the caveat that.
The county ultimately has jurisdiction.
And with the caveat that any future development on the site, they follow recommendations of this traffic engineer.
Would you recommend that Mill Street be done, that widened beforehand?
I, I think, and I think the, I don't want to, I don't think, at this point, you need the road widens. I think your next future development, yes, you will. And you'll have that ability to do that.
That's in cars.
No, no, you'll have that ability to, right now, what your traffic expert can testify to, but the, the trip generation for the two sites that are, that you're to approve tonight are not as great as a full build-out of that site. And you'll have the ability to force them to do the road widens because you'll have an easement to do that.
Mr. Hertz, for the record, would you have your colleagues report entered as a board exhibit with tonight's date, please?
It's from Brightview Engineering, signed by John Jar, who's a PE and a traffic, you know, traffic engineer, and it's dated, a traffic impact study review, proposed commercial center 11 Franklin Avenue, block 2301, Lot One, Belleville, dated October 10th, 2017.
Would you mind giving that copy to our reporter at Abbott Martin?
I think Lois has a copy.
You have another copy?
Yeah.
Thank you. Madam Chair, first.
I have a quick question. The Dynamic Traffic Report, where did that come from? Can anybody answer that one?
Yeah, can I have the date of that report?
September 18, 2017.
Yeah, that was submitted on, our office submitted on behalf of the applicant to the board for review, as well as his professional. I should just tell you that after that, your board professional asked for some supplemental information regarding the full build-out analysis, which we provided to him at his request. But again, that's related to the full build-out, now it's presented to the board today.
The council, why don't we have this more detailed exhibit then?
Sure.
Mr. Hertz.
Yes.
What did he say about the traffic light they want to put up?
About the traffic light?
Yeah. Well, did nobody tell him?
No, no, I think the traffic light's something that they're, the traffic reports, they're showing a traffic light at one of the.
Yeah, the end and out of the old Hoffman La Roche front.
Yes.
Yeah, that's where they want, what did he say about the traffic light going there?
I don't think he had a problem with the traffic light, I think it's, and I, I think if one of the uses that they're proposing, they, they want the traffic light there.
Yeah, so you have a traffic light on Franklin and there, you have a traffic light there, then you have a traffic light in front of Claremont Hospital.
Correct.
You have a traffic light when you go underneath the bridge until where the railroad is.
Correct.
I know I'm correct.
Yeah.
I'd say it's a bad idea to have a traffic light there.
Well, then, you're never going to, for people to try to make left turns out of the site's going to be a problem.
Well, I'm sorry, no left turn.
The other things that, that they could probably testify to is that I think the county's going to require them to lower Franklin Avenue so that there's better site distance out of their, one of their driveways. So if you, if you know Franklin Avenue has a hill to it, so they're going to have to lower that crest so that coming out of the southerly driveway, you'd be able to see traffic coming, I guess, coming south on Franklin Avenue.
Yeah, but the problem I have for years, thousands of people weren't at Jurgensen's. And they came out of there at the end of the day, going in there in the morning, and there was no need of a traffic light then. And you're not telling me there's, there's, you know, less people now than there was with Jurgensen's was there.
I don't know, I don't know how much parking they had for Jurgensen's. There's a, I forget how many spots there.
That was all behind on the bright side.
No, 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 I, I, it was way in the back there.
Yes.
Well.
Mr. Hertz, do I just?
I think, I think the traffic light is.
We're still trying to figure out how to answer me, you want to answer my question?
I do want to ask you a question, thank you very much.
No, I think the traffic light is something that the county's going to look at also.
Oh, we know, we, we know the county's going to look at it. Go ahead, Arlie.
Thank you, Ted.
Tell us by the hours.
Top question, we received this sheet of paper with green.
I told Lois, Mr. Frank Antoni brought that up at the, at a meeting on Tuesday.
I didn't do that.
Oh, I'm sorry, do you know where it came from?
I made copies, and he was talking about taking that property where the pink is, widening Franklin Avenue, widening Mill Street, so.
And the applicants, as far as I'm, I know they're willing to give the, those easements so that you can widen those streets if that's what's required.
But you're saying the county, it depends, the county on Franklin Avenue, so if we say that they have to widen both sides and they go down.
Then we'll bring, we'll bring your recommendation to the county when they have a meeting with the county.
Well, I don't want to vote on it until we get an answer if the street widening would be allowed.
It's okay.
Do we need the county approval to widen that, that area?
Not Mill Street.
Know where the.
Franklin Avenue.
Because I think getting rid of that part of the railroad, where the curve is on Mill Street.
Right.
The pillar. And I see that we could, we could cut into that area to the right slightly and widen that just a little bit so, because you don't have any, you don't have any movement for cars to get to the right if they want to make a right turn, it just is a single backup if that was.
At, at the traffic light.
At Mill, at, on Mill, not on Franklin, on Mill.
Right, yeah.
That one section of Mill.
If that's the board's recommendation, that they're, they're going to give you the land to do that, to make, to allow, I guess, to stack us a right and left turn lane and a left turn lane.
Because that would, that would just help with the stacking up, because on that part of Mill Street, there's no place to go. And sometimes it does literally back up around that curve.
To Harrison.
Yes, it can back up, it can back up sometimes to Harrison. But I think, I understand the county and the county issues, but I think that if we widen Mill Street, we have the flexibility, especially on one side, for that should be considered because it's a problem. I, I tend to come home that way from work, and Mill Street backs up right now, but I don't have an issue with the, the functions of what's proposed right now, the storage unit, that's not a.
Storage is not a big traffic generator.
No, the pads and the uses of the pads are not, not a, not a concern. It's just that I just have that one concern about Mill. As far as I know, this is only tracker related, I'm sorry, I'm depressing it, I apologize to the board. Yes, my only concern would be Mill Street is a single lane period.
If I'm not mistaken, that they, they were going to revise some of the grading so that there would be better site distance up and down Mill Street. I don't know if that, I don't think that that hasn't been done yet, but that would be a compliance issue if you approved the site.
That, that would, that would help the situation because visibility with that curve without a street, I think farther up, there's a dead end, dead street to the left, that's, yeah, it is.
Montgomery, yeah.
If you're coming up through Branch Brook Park and going directly heading, continuing on Mill.
Right.
There's only, there's only a dead end street right now, so that, and it's farther up, so it doesn't affect the visibility where the proposed entrance exit would be. A car coming around a curve would have visibility, would have a visibility issue right now.
Well, I mean, our discussions, me and Frank met with them over a month ago, and our discussion was to improve the site distance up and down Mill Street and ever going to rebrick some of the areas.
Right, then my question is simply redundant based on what you already know.
Yes.
Thank you, Kevin. I have a quick question. And it might just be that I need a recollection. I believe there was one driveway. Now it appears to look like there's two coming out on Franklin Avenue. Am I wrong or?
I always remember two.
The plans have not changed since the last time that you.
So there is two.
Right.
What was the right turn?
The, the, the normally one is only a right turn out, and the other one is where they're proposing a traffic light that's a left and right out.
I understand Kevin's concern from a planning point, because there's a lot of traffic, and I don't want to be the one to hold up the development, especially on that property, but why isn't the county, why are we, why are we putting a cart before the horse if we're going to approve the plant? We're going to create a traffic problem, and then we're going to go to the county.
Not at this point, you are.
Yeah, we're going to go back to.
Now, listen, at some point, and then it's too late, yeah. And then he said, well, you approved it.
Right.
And now then, what are we here to do here?
I, I think we should have something done with Mill Street and the greens with that, and then, I mean, we have no jurisdiction over the county.
Why isn't the county involved in the planning stage?
They should have been, so we didn't have any.
They've met with the county, they can recap with their meetings, their discussions with the county engineer.
Right, I, when the board's done discussing the report that was issued, if you wouldn't mind, I would like our professional to get up to address those points one by one, and he can reiterate the conversation that they had with the county, and I just remind the board that any approval that's granted by this board would be conditioned upon county approval. So we wouldn't be able to do the development unless there was county approval.
Any other questions before?
What's, you know, Houston, please.
Justin Taylor with Dynamic Traffic.
Justin Taylor with Dynamic Traffic.
Do you swear that the whole truth, and that the truth will help you out?
I do.
Thank you.
Let me maybe just address one point before we get into the letter to Mad Chair, oh, no, I'm sorry, to Ms. Short. We have taken a look at the site distance through there, the abutment is actually being...
What exhibit are you referring to?
I'm referring to A2, due to amended overall site plan rendering.
Thank you.
And around the curve on Mill Street, the abutment is actually being removed. And this area will be graded in order to give safe sight lines for the driveway to be able to see vehicles traveling up and down Mill. So what was a concern of ours as well, to make sure that visibility was good for people exiting that driveway. To get back to the letter that was produced and reviewed by the board's traffic consultant, I've had a chance to go through it, and as your engineer stated, we are really in agreement with every comment that he has in that letter. There was a couple of things in there that he asked for additional testimony, which I'll run through now, but there's a lot of suggestions that he had for the full build-out of the site. You know, you recognize that the two uses that are being proposed at this time really are low-traffic generators. We're talking about a car during busiest hour of the site, a car every couple of minutes along Mill Street.
You're right on that point, but then when you put the gas station there, or you put an eatery there, and you put something else there, you put the doctor's office there, then, then the scope of the traffic changes.
And that's correct, and that was his concern, and that's brought up in this letter. And it was also brought up, I believe, by Mr. Conti the last time, that if you were to approve something without any type of easement, or any type of guarantee, that there would be a room for us to widen in the future if it was needed. You know, then you've kind of zoned yourself out of that. And so that's why we are proposing that 10-foot dedication of roadway easement along both frontages. What we find is during this Phase 1, the widening isn't needed, it's not there. The traffic impact, the car every two minutes during the busy hour, doesn't really justify the need for the, the development there.
That's, you know, I, I have to interrupt because this report really, really irked me when I read.
Okay.
Number one using from 2015 statistics, they're not current.
Well, we utilize traffic counts that were conducted along the roadway, that's correct, they weren't from 2015. Yes, that's correct.
You can no longer move out of that area, the traffic is horrendous.
I mean, I, I think the traffic conditions are similar to what they are today, and the growth factor that was applied there.
She probably didn't stand at four o'clock for an hour.
The timelines of peak hours is not justified in this report. You go up to 8:45, that's not peak.
We counted between...
You can go there till 9:30, and you can't get out of Mill Street.
I mean, I understand that, but what that looks at, that, once we move out of that 7 to 9 peak hour that we studied, you start to see a decrease in the traffic generated by the, the actual site. And so what we really want is the worst-case scenario, the peak generation of the site and the peak roadway combined to give that worst-case analysis.
But your peak hours are not what is fact, today's standards.
That's, I, I have...
You're going from 7 to 8:45, that's not peak time there.
I, I got it.
I know this because I live there. You can't get out after 9:30. When you come home at night, your peak hours, it's through the park all the way down to Union Avenue. That's a peak hour until almost 6:30.
And, and we counted, I believe, from 4:30 to 6:30 to accommodate that. But we have also put automatic traffic recorders down, right? So the tubes on the road, that we count for a week. And what we actually find, the peak hour along Franklin Avenue is 8:00 AM to 9:00 AM, which is what our traffic counts, our manual turning counts...
I'm talking Mill Street. Talking Mill Street. You have it down here, peak time, 7 to 8:45 in the morning. At night, 4:30 to 6:00.
Correct.
At 6:30, it's horrendous.
The traffic counts...
The traffic is from Mill Street to Union Avenue at times.
It's worse.
Monday through Friday, it's horrendous.
The traffic counts were conducted from 7:00 AM to 9:00 AM, and we found that the one peak hour...
Doesn't say that in your report.
Um, actually on page 2, under existing conditions, says manual turning movement counts were conducted on Tuesday, November 10, 2015, between 7:00 AM and 9:00 AM.
2015, we're back to 2015.
And between 4:30 PM and 6:30 PM.
It's antiquated statistics as far as on this side.
Well, I mean, as I said, I believe that the conditions may have increased. We also, to accommodate for that, looked to New Jersey Transportation for a background birth rate to accommodate other development, coming online, other traffic. And, and we increased the traffic by that 2% per year, which is what the NJDOT would recommend, to bring that base volume up to 2017. We then took that as existing and added two more years of growth to the full build-out of this development, which we anticipate to be 2019. So we actually have four years of background growth at 2% per year to take that into account, the fact that we started in 2015.
So you know, we're looking at over, over 1,000, maybe 1,500 according to that?
No, not at all, what we found was under...
About 1,000 now?
Well, it's not, it's about 850 now, under an existing condition.
That's what your statistics are saying.
Well, it is, if you would look at figure, figure 1 in the back of the study.
I have a grand total of 1,200 cars on Mill Street. And your other study says 801.
I'm not sure where those numbers, what are you referring to, which figure?
I was just happy that this was your report and not ours, because I'm very happy that our engineer did what he did. And I'm happy with those statistics, and that's, and I would encourage the board to think about it and go with ours.
Well...
But I, I, you don't have to explain anything more.
Can we then just walk through your professional's letter?
Sure.
Okay. So in comment 1, he asks, as you say, about the traffic counts and why we conducted them during, when we did. He says that typically, fourth, he actually recommends only counting from 4 to 6. We counted from 4 to 30, 6:30 in the evening, because we did find that the peak was a little bit later than industry standards would say. So we did conduct our counts from 4:30 to 6:30, not 4 to 6, as, as would typically be done for a traffic impact study. Comments 2 through 4, he's asked for additional information for the full build-out condition when that development is considered. He talks about a three-year build-out when that comes online. He also recommends that we look at possible improvements at the intersection of Mill and Franklin for this full build-out, full build-out condition. And we completely agree with that, we would comply with that. When the site would come back, and we really have a firm idea of what the rest of the phases would be, absolutely will be resubmitting another traffic study, which will address that and address his comments. Number 4, he asks for some additional information for that full build-out for the trip generation, and we would be able to provide that at that time. In number 5, he asks for some testimony about pedestrian access through the site. And what we are proposing, based on his comment, is to actually connect the sidewalks. There's currently sidewalks along both Mill Street and Franklin Avenue. And we would connect, while it's not shown in the plan, we would propose to connect the sidewalk network along this internal roadway to provide pedestrian connectivity through both. There is a connection currently proposed to the pharmacy, and then we would also run it between the pharmacy and up to the self-storage, so that there is internal connection, you don't have pedestrians walking on the roadway. And it's something I, I agree with as a traffic engineer, that we should have that internal connectivity between the uses for the pedestrians. So it's something we would do. Comments 6 through 8 refer to additional information for the full build-out condition, and we would apply with that as we would move forward. The next section of his report said access and circulation. In comments 1 through 6, we, we will fully comply with what he's requiring and requesting. Some of it's some sight distance analysis, which we talked about, and that we will provide as a condition of approval. And also some that your, your engineer recommended, that the township be invited to any meetings with the county, which we are completely on board with moving forward. Number 7 asks for some clarification on the emergency vehicle fire truck that we utilized. We utilized in our analysis a 47-foot truck. We had confirmed with the township that the largest vehicle they actually used is 41 feet. And so the, the one, the templates that we provided are actually provided for conservative analysis. Items 8 and 9 deal with parking and loading, that was actually testified to at the last meeting, and the operational stuff that was, that was provided for the proposed uses. So it actually already has been provided. Items 10 through 12, we agree to comply with. And finally, into the general, there are three comments. We will comply with all three of those, with a bit of a clarification in the fact that we are proposing that 10-foot easement along both roadways for any future widening that might be necessary with a further build-out of this project.
Just to clarify, the Mill Street side is in the future?
That's correct. So I, I would just like to read comment 3 under general, he said, "We believe that the current application in two uses provides adequate parking and minimal traffic impacts. It is, as our understanding, the plan is being revised to accommodate future acceleration and deceleration along, along both frontages in the future, if needed, in the future." And so, I mean, reading that, I believe it's his recommendation, and that's, that we're taking in providing that area to accommodate it in the future if it's needed. But under this Phase 1, the traffic really just doesn't justify the need for that type of, that type of improvement.
So, just to clarify, I mean, the application that's presented for the board tonight only relates to the two paths. One's a self-storage facility, and one's a pharmacy with drive-through. Based on our traffic engineer's testimony, there are low-traffic generating uses. And I believe that your traffic expert has agreed with that conclusion. I think where the board is getting hung up is in the future. And that application is not before the board this evening, but what we're doing to accommodate the questions that were raised and issues addressed by the board last time is, well, what if you build it out and then you can't do anything about it in the future? So what your traffic engineer has suggested, and what we're agreeing to, is to provide a 10-foot wide easement so that in the future, when we come back with full build-out analysis, when we know what the exact uses are, when we have a traffic report related to those uses, and it's determined by your professionals, engineer, traffic expert, et cetera, we would be able to have room to provide for those improvements when the traffic is, and the improvements are actually necessitated.
Nick Council, you will put the, the proposed easements on what would be your final plans?
Yes, yes, we would do that.
Does it change any setbacks?
It does not, no, no.
So we would, we would not create any more deviations or, or barriers issues. We would move back the signage 10 feet so that it's in full compliance with the code.
That was the one section.
And we would do that now, so that there's no issue in the future.
Mr. Harris, would you like to see that, that plan?
Well, I mean, if the board wishes that, when, they'll come in and they'll submit plans for...
You want to make that as a condition if the board were to move forward on it? Because we don't have that in front of us, the easement or...
Any regulations that the board makes would have to be on their plans, revised set of plans for a compliance review before the building department would issue any building permits.
And you'll accept it as a condition then?
Yes.
Yes, Mr. Walker. To go back to the, your comment on pedestrian access and circulation, you said you were going to put a walkway around the, the access road that's, that's in there?
That's correct.
And now go all the way to Mill Street?
That's correct, we would connect the two sidewalks from Franklin to Mill through the site. And it's anticipated as this, the other pieces of this start to come online, we want a fully walkable development, whether there's office, or there's the, the, a gas station, or there's other uses within here. We want to be able to encourage them to walk safely through the neighborhood.
Or if you take the, the sidewalk all the way to Mill Street, are you then causing a problem by encouraging people in apartment complexes on the other side to walk across Mill Street?
To walk, to cross Mill Street?
Yeah.
I don't think you're necessarily encouraging them to cut through here, because other than getting to this development, there's no reason for them to cut through. And in order to do that, you have the crosswalks down here at the intersection with Mill and Franklin. Because I, I don't foresee a fair amount of customers for the self-storage necessarily walking from those apartments. I could see the pharmacy absolutely situated at the corner, and it's much, much more conducive for them to walk to the corner and then utilize the sidewalk network provided in front of the pharmacy.
Well, I'm certain they're going to find it easier to go directly across than down to the corner and then cross and then come back up, is what...
I mean, the sidewalk along Mill Street is there today. Even if we weren't to put the sidewalk network through there, they'd still be utilizing the sidewalk to access the site that's, that we're proposing. So I think providing it...
Right, but with the sidewalk there, there's no reason for anybody to cross Mill Street to get to the other side.
I'm not, I'm not following them. They would need to access this site, given that the elevation changes. You would need to use the sidewalk proposed at the southeast corner of the proposed pharmacy. This actually sits up above because of the grade that goes through here. So this is the path of least resistance for people to access this point. And typically, the pedestrians would follow that path of, path of least resistance. So the proposal of the sidewalk through the network here, I don't think does anything to encourage or discourage that, that condition.
What apartments are you talking about, what on?
Senior's.
Oh, the senior building, which is located, which is located...
Or 55 in old.
Yep.
The seniors have access through their site to, to, I remember correctly, through Senior Citizen Center to get to the sidewalk on Franklin Avenue, and then they could cross at the light.
Because there's no sidewalk in front of the senior building.
No, no, but there is a Franklin...
The 55 building.
No, but there's a set of steps, if you go over there, you see there's a set of steps that lead to the, that lead to the Franklin Avenue sidewalk from, from the building. It's going to be... They put a fence up because there's a retaining wall there. But if I remember correctly, there's sort of steps that lead from their site to the Franklin Avenue sidewalk. So if anything, I would think they would walk that way, instead of going down that bridge and down that ramp, you know, the way that bridge is. So there's, from the, from the senior citizen housing, they have access to the Franklin Avenue sidewalk at the north side of the Senior Citizen Center, and they could, then they could cross at the traffic light on Franklin and Mill.
Just on when the people get...
No, I understand, I don't think they would walk across that bridge, their bridge anyway, to be honest with you. Because there's no sidewalk at all until you get up towards the, like, it's disabled fence on, on the Mill Street side.
Yeah, but I, I've seen seniors walking in the street there. Instead of going the way you say, down the stairs...
Right.
And walking over to the pharmacy. I have seen a lady pulling her grocery bag, or whatever the hell it was, walking on Mill Street, heading towards the bridge to go into the building. I don't know how it was...
I'm not saying, no one's gonna do that, but they do have, they do have, they do have access to the Franklin Avenue side.
People get run over every day illegally crossing.
Dan, Mr. Short?
Just for the pharmacy, because when one by the car wants to get into the pharmacy from Franklin Avenue, how would you get in?
So if you were traveling southbound along Franklin Avenue, you would utilize the right turn-in, right turn-out driveway here located to the south end of the pharmacy building. If you're traveling northbound, you would actually most likely utilize the traffic light and come in through here and access the site in that direction. Or you would come up to Franklin Avenue, make a left, and secure yourself here. But there's no left turn proposed at this center driveway, that's right turn-in, right turn-out.
Okay, thank you, Beth, I missed that, that's what my concern was because of that intersection.
I thought you said the last meeting, the driveway on top behind the storage building is a one-way out.
This driveway on Mill is, is, no, is a full movement driveway.
Well, that was the one you said last meeting, you said it was a exit-only driveway.
I don't believe that I did, and if I did, I apologize, a spoken error. But we've always proposed this as a full movement driveway, and all our analysis is showing that as a full movement driveway.
You have people going up Mill Street now, making lefts into there, and people making out.
It's correct.
And you wouldn't consider putting in Mill Street's, what's proposed in three years, widening?
I mean, what we're talking about from a, from a volume standpoint, is during that busiest hour, eight or nine cars in an hour. A car every six or seven minutes.
Well, we like to do preventive.
I, I understand that.
I think that's, that's the thing, there's a problem that it is now, and I know I'd feel better thinking that it is done now so we would prevent in the future, but that's only my...
Can I, can I suggest something? So, so we do have, we will reserve the easement... Can I suggest something? So we do have, we will reserve the easement area. And, you know, this is all right now based on hypotheticals. So once there's a full build-out of these two pad sites, if your consultants feel that it's necessary, can we think about maybe at that point in time doing the lane if it's necessary at that point in time? There will be that easement reserved for you. But I think that once this is built, you're going to see that there's, it's going to be very low traffic volume generation.
It's horrendous now. I can't see it not getting any better. Whether it's one more car, it's a problem on Mill Street. It backs up, and if you're studying, with all due respect, I don't agree with that because it's two years old. The times are not really at peak hour, and that's me. If you don't want to do them holes, you're right. That's all right.
So what exactly are you looking for, Pat? You're just looking for a right turn?
I would like to see Mill Street down.
No, no, no. The whole length of it or just...
What's being proposed?
Or just to have a right-turn lane at the intersection.
What's being proposed on that extra lane?
An extra at the intersection.
The right-turn lane on Mill. You know, fixing that. That's where most of everybody's concerned between last meeting and this meeting is Mill Street. Unless you actually sit in that traffic and you see what kind of traffic is up there?
It's unfortunate that your traffic consultant was not here this evening, and I think, I would hope that your engineer who spoke with him would agree that the conclusion was, based on what's proposed today, it's not warranted, which is why we're reserving it. And I think your traffic engineer concurs with our section engineer on that point, which is why we would agree to reserve it for future build-out if it's necessary.
Here's another question on the easement. Is the easement the whole stretch of Mill Street for the whole property line? I said it last meeting and I'll say it this meeting. I'll trust the traffic reports. I will have to trust your testimony, the testimony of our expert. In the future, if there's, if these two pads create that kind of havoc and it is a bad intersection, then we wouldn't approve any other development. And obviously, they want to develop the rest of the track. It's going to take some work to get the county to agree to approve.
Well, that's what I'm saying. Halfway. He is halfway.
Yeah, but whatever you put at this site, that right-hand turn lane is not going to solve all the problems in that area. It's just not. It'll help, and I would love to see it. But if both our experts more or less agree that this first phase of development isn't going to impact that much, well, let's find out, you know? Because they need to come back in front of the board for approvals on future development. At that point, you know, can we twist the arm of the county? Maybe we can't. It's all our dreams and wishes, but it really doesn't add up too much if the county's not going to go along with it.
But we could do something about Mill. That's my point. We could do something about Mill now.
We still have to get the town to approve. We still have to get the council to approve.
Our engineer is saying that it's necessary.
No, no, it's your approval.
At whose cost?
The developer's cost.
Yeah, I'll just keep reiterating that I believe your consultant and ours concurred at this point in time, based on what is proposed for development today, which is before the board today, is not warranted based on the self-storage and the pharmacy. We'll reserve it for the future. When we do come back, and we will come back to this door for future development and build-out, and at that point in time, you will have that easement reserved if you feel that it's warranted. And I'm sure there will be future discussions with the county related to impact on Franklin Avenue at that point in time as well.
Wouldn't it make sense from your perspective to just do the improvement now and not go from curb to building to curb, develop it, and come back in and tear it all out and put the roadway in?
If I could have our professional sworn, our witness related to the owner's rep?
Please swear your hand. Please swear to tell the truth. The truth and nothing but the truth of God.
I do.
Please state your name.
Christopher Richter, R-I-C-H-T-E-R. I was previously sworn. So having been involved in this situation before, I, we would love it if there was actually an understanding of what that improvement would be. We can't speculate on what the world improvements will be until we know what the land uses are and what the result of traffic is. So if we end up building a hotel and some retail, and the rest of the site is dormant for 10 years because there isn't 10% interest, we're spending money that doesn't provide any return for us. These two projects can't afford to widen out this intersection and blow off what may be need if there's 200,000 or 300,000 square feet additional floor in this project. But we don't know what that is. We don't know when that's going to occur. We don't know what else is going to happen to the surrounding road network. And, you know, when we talk about widening it, you know, it's not just like, oh, just widen. There's an engineering plan that has to have tapers and widths and curb radii and capacity analysis, and we're not even close to that. We have no idea what's going to happen to this project. So I think it's unfair to say just widen. First of all, it's clear that there is no justification on these two land uses to widen. And we're here saying we're fully committed to doing the right thing. We're going to dedicate a lot of land, reserve it for future road widening purposes, but right now, there is no need for it. We understand your concerns, and by giving the ability for us to step in and build out the infrastructure and creating a development that is pushed back and designed to accommodate the road widening, I think we're being responsible developers in doing the right thing.
I agree.
So to help the board, how much land are you reserving? Because right now, the board has no idea how wide, how long this easement is going to be.
If you, Justin, if you could just give me the progress on Mill and Franklin, please?
We have 664.88 feet.
Give me, just give me all, say, 600 and...
64.88 along Franklin. And then on Mill, you actually have a couple because of the curve. It's 445.24 plus 113.18 plus 116.96.
So those are substantial easements in terms of length. What about the width?
It will be 10 feet along both roadways, which should be sufficient to put that extra lane and sidewalk and all the roadway.
I just also...
Let's hold that a second. Any questions about the length and the width of the easement? Is the board satisfied with those proposed dimensions?
Yes.
Is that yes to silence?
I have no comment, sir. I know what I'm going to do when it comes up to a vote.
I just wanted to make comment. On Mill Street, at the point where you're talking about widening the road, there's a depressed area in there that would require, you know, quite a bit of construction. So to the developer's point, if both of our experts are telling us that the traffic, the extra traffic, isn't going to be that hurtful to the situation, and then if they want to proceed forward with something that even our expert feels would be, then at that point, they'd have to execute that plan or else we wouldn't approve the next project. But widening the road isn't like widening a parking lot. There's infrastructure, there's traffic lights, there's a lot. It's expensive, I'm sure. So I wouldn't want to hold up the project just for that. One other thing is the proposed light at the main entrance, is that just proposed now? The county hasn't...
No, I didn't. Thank you for bringing it up. I just want to clarify for the record the proposal. When the plan's originally filed, as you know, there was a gas community storm on the place. That's a relatively high trip generate. That's not on. We cannot get the signal warrants and the ability to construct that traffic light with just these two uses. You need more traffic. So just to clarify for the record, we are not seeking the approval for that traffic signal under this Phase One application. It is going to, because we can't do it, we will not get the permits to do that. So that is going to be deferred to the point in time when we generate enough traffic in this project to meet those signal laws.
We can't expect this developer to ease the traffic problems that exist there. We can't.
I think...
So when you're saying you're not going to put a gas station there?
Right.
Not here, not right now.
Oh, not right now?
No, it's not part of our application. We withdrew it.
I knew you withdrew, but you're saying you're not going to put a gas station there in the future?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay, thank you.
I'm saying it's not part of this application.
I know, it's not part, I know it's not part of this application. All the other things you're talking about, the medical center, the hotel, the trips to Vegas, that's not part of the application right now. But it's what happens in the future that's going to clog this area even worse.
And we are making, there's nothing else we can do except give land in anticipation of us, we generate that traffic, it is our responsibility to mitigate that traffic, and we build those improvements. That's the way the world works. We're not saying we're not doing that. We're saying now is not the right time. Your traffic consultant is very concise. It is not warranted at this point in time. We are in no way, you know, saying anything, but we will do the right thing in the future when we know what the traffic will be. And I think your counselor can guide you on the issue of the fact that your traffic is a pre-existing problem, right?
We don't want to make it worse.
No, we are forbidden uses in this zone in the redevelopment. You have a pre-existing problem. I think you can, there's, I'm certainly not going to get into the specifics under pre-existing conditions on traffic. But because you have an existing problem, I don't think it's fair that on these two land uses, you put that burden to resolve that on our back.
Well, you don't want it on your back. You're going to get on your back.
Mr. DiBiase, do we have recourse with future development if it exceeds, you know, the traffic recommendations to deny an application?
This board will have jurisdiction for any future development, and the applicant has already stated on the record that the applicant agrees with that. We're going to come back here for any future development.
We will.
And at that time, we will look at the dynamics of traffic and make a determination at that time. Mr. Hertz, can you give the board an opinion based upon your college report as to what impact these two uses would have? Just these two uses on...
Based on the parking required and the trip generation, it would, it'll have a negligible effect. I think the parking is around 50 for both uses, and the self-storage is, even though it might require 20 spaces or whatever the number was, it, those uses are...
The board have any questions regarding this latest...
I've never seen a self-storage really busy, you know, busy.
I tend to be a market, a market person. If the traffic gets that horrendous, nobody's going to a convenience store on that corner when there's five other ones in town. And that pharmacy will suffer, and that storage facility will suffer because the roadways can't handle it. I, I don't, I think it's, we're beating a dead horse. We have control over future development. If we want to move the project forward, I'd make a motion to move the project forward and, you know...
Maybe just eliminate some apprehension on the board. What is your schedule for, do you plan on building these two buildings immediately and then come back and, I mean, like Mr. Conti said, I hate to see any improvements made and then all of a sudden you're ripping them out for another use or...
No, no, we're committed to the, well, the eternal loop road.
Right.
We're committed to constructing the self-storage as quickly as possible. We do not have a signed deal with the drugstore right now. So right now, we would immediately proceed with the infrastructure, which is a very expensive package, bring all utilities into the project for any and all future uses that may or may not come in. It's, you know, water sewer, your dry utilities, your gas, electric, you know, conduits for telephone service for the entire loop road connecting Franklin to Mill, and then building the self-storage pad as well as all the master plan drainage system. So you've got a retention basin that's designed behind the self-storage that serves to accommodate additional curbs in the future, and then a load basin, all the retaining walls. You've got three-tiered walls. There's, you know, a million dollars worth of retaining. So there's a substantial amount of infrastructure that we would do go now in anticipation of, you know, creating the groundwork for the rest of the road.
So what improvements are being, are you, just, so you're on the record, what improvements are you proposing at the intersection of Mill and Franklin? Is there a new sidewalk on the frontage?
No, it's existing sidewalk.
That's all staying?
And basically, as a result of the commitment to provide a 10-foot of land necessary for future road widening, we are going to modify that grading so that you have a flat 10-foot area at 2% that can be converted to road infrastructure very easily. It's not like we're not going to build walls in that area. We're going to move our, we're going to make those grading modifications so that if and when that road widening is required, it's not, we're not moving walls. We're doing, you guys, we, I'm assuming it's going to be us, would not have to move any infrastructure that we're doing in Phase One.
So any proposed widening at that intersection to provide a right-turn lane as the cost to do that would be minimal. You're going to absorb that mostly upfront, and then if they have to widen it 10 feet, it's a minimal cost to you? Is that what you're saying while you're creating?
I think what we're doing under the base infrastructure is we're not creating any conferences to widen.
I understand that, but you're setting it up for, you're setting it up in case there is going to be a widening, correct?
Yes.
Yeah, and so what I'm saying is that the cost to widen it, yeah, you can have the Biden curb and that, but it's already graded and there's no moving of whatever improvements you made on site.
Correct.
And that easement, how is the sidewalk figured in? Is it figured in or...
Well, no, I mean, the sidewalk which stays, once it's widened, you have to remove the existing sidewalk, install a new curving and new sidewalk behind it.
So the easement, would it have to be bigger than 10 feet to accommodate the sidewalk? I wonder, are we coming from the curb now?
You have additional right-of-way that exists right now. So your right-of-way line is 10-plus feet behind these curving lines. So there's plenty of room there to accommodate a traditional lane. And, you know, it's, I think we're doing the right thing from a planning perspective.
Is the lowering of Franklin Avenue part of your Phase One too?
No, I don't believe so. That would be part of the traffic signal.
That requirement is based on stopping sites that's requirement for the signal and the ability to see those vehicles stop at the red light. So that requirement is under, under the, just the non-seenless intersection. Right now, I'm saying it's not, but we don't have our county approval yet, so there's still a chance that the county says fix that issue. That would be covered under the condition of any approval if the board seeks to do so under the county approval.
What's the great difference on the right-turn-only driveway in front of the pharmacy from the curb to the market area?
One sec.
Well, can we just ask that question again?
The right-turn only off of Franklin Avenue South, that's one driveway. What's the great difference between curb and, say, parking area or slab elevation?
So right now, the right-and-right-out driveway is approximately elevation 94 where it meets Franklin, and the parking lot, as you go in the north, is at 97, and as you go towards the eternal road, it gets up to about 90. And just as, want to reference the intersection of Mill and Franklin is at elevation of about 8. So that driveway is 14 feet above the intersection.
All right, Mr. Shaw, any other questions?
Are you going to open up to the public?
Tom? All right, I'm going to open up to the public. Mr. Dubrash?
Let me just say this. If we're only going to ask questions now, we're not going to swear in witnesses.
Okay.
If we get into the comments, then we're going to swear you in.
Okay. Question is this. On this corner where you're giving the easement, around the corner, how is that going to affect the parking for the pharmacy?
It won't impact the parking for the pharmacy.
You have the parking going almost directly to the corner.
We have the parking in this area, the northeast corner of the property.
Right.
There's a property line that runs along there. We would be extending that 10 feet, and it actually does not impact the parking whatsoever.
Not at all?
Nope.
Okay, let's ask you.
Thank you.
Mr. Frank, Tom?
Yes, I have two questions. Sorry, this is your dynamic traffic study.
That's correct.
They, it was taken on November 10, 2015, but then you added to 2% the New Jersey DOT annual background growth rate.
That's correct.
2%. That 2%, I have engineers, architects, nieces and nephews in the family, so they contacted, they got me to chart. That 2% is not calculated per municipal... That 2% is not calculated per municipality. It's calculated per county.
That's correct.
Correct. So then I contacted somebody with that and I asked a question of what is it? And this person, very knowledgeable in the state, says, no, it's 2% per county. Where do you live? I said Essex County in Belleville. He said, oh, that's Essex County. He said, well, probably Essex Falls, Summit, Short Hills, and not going to have big, and towns like that not going to have big. And then he specifically mentioned Bloomfield. He said there's a tremendous amount of growth in Bloomfield. So you can't just calculate that. 2% growth rate is for every municipality. You may not get some that have no growth at all. So your 2% that you're adding on here per year could turn out to be accurate because right, our neighbor next door has bigger than 2% growth rate. So that's not per municipality.
No, that's per type of roadway. It breaks down into arterial, minor, major arterials, collector roadways, local roadways. And then it is by county.
And just, I'm not a hostile witness yet. I like this project. It's just got to be done the right way. And the proposal, I think this, Mr. Nansen or Gerard, that you're going to have a problem with Franklin Avenue, with the county.
Can we just do questions now?
Yes. Are you familiar with the Essex Park project down the road on Franklin Avenue that was built?
No, no, I'm not.
The county allowed them to make a cut into it.
Is that north of this site?
Yes, north about of...
Didn't they require a left-turn lane into the site? For an un-signaled intersection?
No, it's not signalized.
I know, it's correct. But they required a left-turn lane to be constructed on Franklin.
Yeah, and they widened Franklin Avenue. So that's similar to what we're asking for here.
I'd say no because it is an un-signaled intersection there where on, when we get to the full build, we actually are looking for a signal and conduct our left turns at a signalized controlled intersection. So that's the difference.
That was a micro pole to widen it to the signal. So people get out of the flow of traffic. If you widen it that 10 feet, as they're approaching that signalized entrance, they can get out of the flow of traffic that's heading south on Franklin and they can, then at the light, get in there. And you can have an all-green light at all times. You wouldn't even need to stop anybody if you had that 10-foot right-turn lane. In fact, if you went to the, from Mill Street to the signal that you're proposing, in the middle of that, you have the other entrance, correct?
That's correct.
The right-turn entrance.
That's correct.
So if you add that 10-foot cutback, you're not impeding the flow of traffic. And that would accommodate both of you. You want to get into the site. You're in that 10-foot lane. You could go into the first driveway or you can get into the signalized driveway without even stopping because you could just have a green light going into there.
Do you agree with that, sir? That was the question.
Traveling southbound, that 10-foot, what we would look at under that full buildout would be a deceleration lane into the central driveway. So that would get the traffic flow out of the southbound flow and allow them to enter the site. That's correct.
That's what I'm proposing. The other one on the Mill Street side, at some point down near Mill Street, I think 10 feet, I think the object here that I propose this thing would be to eliminate, not just 10 feet easement on Mill Street, but to eliminate that curve. Now, I grant you're going to take shrubbery down and so you have a sight line to beat car. But to make the road a little straight, you know, just to eliminate. So at that point, it wouldn't be a straight 10 feet all along. It will be 10 feet down near the bottom of Mill Street and Franklin. But then it will be wider up there to take that hump out of Mill Street. You see the big curve?
I do understand the curve. I don't see the necessity of that. Really with the issue coming southbound through here, one is the traffic flow that we've heard, but is the site visibility that's created by the no longer used bridge abutment? And once you clear that out, it'll be visible in both directions as you travel through Mill that we don't need to really encourage people to drive any faster through there.
I know that they do. And also, when you've got a curve like that and it's downhill toward Franklin, in icy weather, if you've got a curve, it's a little more difficult to handle a car.
I mean, I don't see the horizontal or the vertical as a challenge through this on that curve.
And the other question, which you may not know, might not be your expertise. On that stretch of road, on the Mill Street side there, the infrastructure, the water, sewer lines, and whatever underground line, are they going to be into the project from that Mill Street?
I'd have to, I'd have to look at that. I'm not 100%.
They're going to run a 12-inch border main through their site and to bypass that intersection so that if there's a water main break, they're going to help us so that we don't close the hospital down.
But that, where is it going into the site? From where?
From Mill Street down. And it's going to tie, go through their internal roadways down to Franklin Avenue.
Right, so there's a present water line on Mill Street that they're going to tap off?
There's two water lines on Mill Street.
They're going to tap off those?
They're going to tap off both of them. There's one on both sides of the street. There's an 8-inch on one side and a 10-inch on the other.
Right.
So they're going to tap into both so they have enough water that's equivalent to a 12-inch line that they're going to run through the site.
I want the location. So in other words, when you install a water line, the tap, the shuttle valve is normally at the curb. Is that correct?
What, you mean for the water service?
Yeah, when you run a service to a property.
This is a 12-inch line that's going in though. So wherever they do tapping valve, there'll be valves there.
Right, isn't it normally at the property line?
That's going to be wherever they tap. There'll be a valve to shut the line on and off.
Okay, and the shoreline, it goes into Mill Street too?
I think, yes, I think it goes down to Mill Street, yes. But there's a, that's the second river line there.
In your opinion, it wouldn't be practical to do this work now without those buildings now? But you're going to do that later. You have the facilities there. You're disturbing the current businesses to do all that construction down the road.
I think you stated that they were going to do that infrastructure improvements.
No, I'm talking the widening of Mill Street, not the infrastructure. Do the widening. Being you're doing that work, you're digging up to put shorelines and water lines and whatever in there. You've got it partially dug up now. It would be practical to do the widening now and eliminate part of that curve. This way it's done.
Again, Chris, we don't know what the widening will be. We don't have a plan. There is no, you know, is it the first 200 feet of Mill Street to create a right-turn southbound on Franklin? Is it 300 feet up, 400 feet? It's going to be a direct result of the traffic that we generate while we build out. We don't have a plan. We don't have the ability to create a plan because we don't have the traffic generators that would justify the extent of the widening or the detailed scope of the project.
Well, you have the present traffic study, which we who live in Belleville know. And I travel that quite frequently because my son lives off Montgomery Street, which that's how I go this morning. I took my wife to Claramette. By Franklin, we come out, we make the right to go up Mill Street to go into Montgomery. And I testified at the last meeting. No, I didn't. I said at the council meeting last week. My two grandkids go to Fairview School on Montgomery.
We're doing questions now.
Well, the point is, I just, I think that should be done now because later, all that construction will be done while you have two existing businesses trying to do work. It's going to upset the site. Just expect we get requests that...
You're clapping. Nothing on Mill Street is going to impact the businesses. We are so far remote. We're 30 feet down in grade change. Any widening on Mill Street will have zero impact on those businesses.
No, our engineer testified that the water and sewer lines are coming in from Mill Street. Is that not correct?
They'll be, they'll be coming in at the upper strivers.
That's correct. They'll be coming through the actual proposed roadway through there and not a direct tap to these buildings. It would be internal to the site.
Well, again, you're doing a lot of construction, taking down the bridges, bucking them. All I think now would be a more practical time to do it.
Are there any other questions?
Michael Sheldon, 47 Pollock Street. I just have one suggestion to make for the planning board. If and when you compel the county to widen Franklin Avenue, might you also ask them to widen that little section of Mill Street leading out of the park to Franklin Avenue? Because as Chairwoman Patty said a little while ago, often during the peak of the day, traffic backs up all the way to Union Avenue. And the reason for that is that little piece of Mill Street coming out of the park is a single lane. And if somebody needs to make a left turn onto Franklin, everybody is trapped behind them. So if you could get Joe D. to seed a little bit of the park, it would make it easier for him and his guests to get to the Nina's the next time they have a fundraiser. So just something to keep on your mind. If you're going to get the county involved in a wholesale way to re-engineer that intersection, try to get a little bit of the park. And I think it would go a long way to fixing all the woes for that part of Belleville.
We're going to swear you in and you're going to say that what you said was true because it's not a question or comment.
Now or what?
Right now, it's, I'm got a little loose here. We're asking for questions.
Do you swear that the testimony you have already given and the testimony you will give is truth, the whole truth and everything?
Yes, I do in both cases. All right, so what I would recommend is that if and when the planning board gets to the point where the county is involved in widening Franklin Avenue, I think you should ask them to also consider widening that little section of Mill Street leading out of the park to Franklin Avenue. As everyone here is aware, that part of Mill Street backs up atrociously. And the reason is, is that it's a single lane. And if someone needs to make a left turn at Franklin Avenue, once a week, I'm there with my dad to take him to Claramette to see his doctors. You wait there for several signal changes. So if that little piece could be widened, if the county can give you just a little sliver of the park and you could put two lanes, that would be the north side, and have a dedicated left lane, a left turn, I think that would be a tremendous help to finally alleviating the traffic congestion in that part of Belleville.
So I'll leave that up for engineering when it goes to...
To file for future use. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, thanks. I have to say...
Mary Higgins. I received this certified letter because I live within 200 feet of the proposed project. This question is about traffic, even though the letter is concerning a flood hazard area individual permit. It says here that the self-service storage facility is 25,000 square feet. Is that correct?
It's a footprint of 25,000 square feet. It's actually, four floors, 100,000 square feet.
Okay, so is your traffic study based on 25,000 square feet or 100?
100.
Okay, thank you.
Any other further? All right, Zina, we're going to close the...
The only thing is, they wanted, some people made questions and comments. Any other comment?
No. A testimony I want to, one piece testimony. Okay.
You've already been sworn out. We all know we did, yes, we did. We did in the other case. Correct.
Okay, Toleo, Deverschel, 8 Grove Street. The only thing I want to say to the board is if you're going to approve this project for the two uses, that for the pharmacy, if it's going to be allowed to be open all night, that there should be a Belleville cop that they should have to pay for after a certain time. Because as Mr. Kennedy said last month, that is close to a very bad area. And that is a very isolated area at 2, 3, 4 o'clock in the morning. If they're going to be open all night and the pharmacy is going to be open all night, then there should be a cop station in there. Okay, because it's very easy for someone to go in there and commit a robbery early in the morning.
We all know the area. We all are. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And others, we're going to close this now. Do I get a motion?
What are the conditions?
Yeah, can we have a clarity on the conditions?
Very good.
Mr. Hurwitz?
Can we get a clarification on all the conditions before we place our vote?
According to your prime?
Sorry.
All that the conditions are, the granting of the township, the 10-foot easement, all of the Mill Street frontage and the Franklin Avenue frontage. At the time of any future development on the site, that there'll be an updated traffic report as per John Jor's recommendations. I guess anything that was in our report.
What's the date of that, Mr. Hurwitz?
I forgot what it was. August 15, 2017.
All conditions and recommendations in the August 15 report, sir?
Yes. Just for the record, about the 12-inch border main going through the site. I can't think of anything else at this point besides what was in our report.
What about the security issue, Mr. Hurwitz? About 24 hours in a security...
If that's something the board,
If that's something the board, that would be an engineering recommendation, that'd be a forward recommendation.
Who said we're going to give them 24 hours anyway?
That's only to be discussed now.
That was the proposal.
I like to put in a 24-hour pharmacy there.
Ten hours of operation. Hours of operation as a condition, councilman?
Yeah.
And your suggestion is, sir?
Six to 10:00, 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 o'clock at night.
What about the drive-through?
No drive-through. It's not a White Castle.
It's in the plan.
No, the drive-through is on the plan, sir.
No, the drive-through, they're going to have a drive-through, but it's not going to be open after 10:00.
That's your suggestion?
That's my suggestion.
Any other suggestions on hours of operation?
Unless they want to build like parrot pits with machines on top, plenty in each corner.
You have these, the sidewalk that doesn't show in the plan, that from Franklin all went to Mill Street?
We're going to make it subject to a final plan coming to you for your approval.
Right.
The sidewalk is, Mike?
No, it's eternal. From Franklin Avenue to Mill Street, eternal. County will all, Franklin Toriate, to see approvals, which is in our letter also. I think in Frank's letter, denial also.
Hours of operation, Madam Chairperson.
I believe it was six to 10 that's proposed. Anyone else have any other comments about that? Think that's board desirous? No 24 hours?
No.
We do have an extension if needed with further development. That's not a condition, that's just part of the presentation.
Well, we are making it up today.
You're making it as a condition, okay.
Future development traffic study, which you already disagree with the first.
But there's another problem, is the storage building is going to be opened up 24 hours. Whoever's there is going to leave at 6:00, and in the building, they're going to have their own.
Maybe the chef's security at that point?
Key or something to go in and out. And they're going to get slaughtered when they go in there at 10:00, 11:00 o'clock at night.
That's true with those storage facilities, including Franklin Street.
Franklin Street has a person that lives on the property.
24, really?
Yeah.
Does somebody want to make a recommendation of maybe having security? No? So 24 hours for security for any of the storage?
Just a point of clarification, our prior testimony with regard to the hours of operation for self-storage, if we could just state that.
It's not 24 hours. What we testify to is that the actual units for the customers that have access to facilities from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. seven days a week. And that the office hours, it's Monday through Friday, 9:30 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Saturday to 9:00 to 5:30. And Sunday, the office hours are closed. So it's not 24 hours.
So they can't get in there after 10:00?
That's correct.
Same hours, same hours.
Yeah, that's fine. That's fine.
But that's where both are still.
Yeah, that's consistent. Just for clarification, Tom, you said the letter was August 15?
I think that's my last letter.
Because I do have a copy of the letters.
All conditions?
For August.
All conditions of his letter, yeah.
August 15.
I have one, the last report. Oh, no, I'm sorry, I'll look at the wrong one. August 4th, you're correct. I'll see about the next applications.
Okay. And I have a letter from Frank dated July 27.
That was his letter of denial.
That's his only letter.
Okay.
Call the motion. Call these conditions.
Call motion to approve what the condition set forth.
My second.
Second.
Okay. Yes.
Call.
This is in Algarada.
No.
Councilman Kennedy.
No.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
I'm going to take a five-minute recess and then we'll repeat.
I'm going to the next case. All right. The meeting's back in order. PB 2017-06 KNS LLC 46-500 Geralman Street, driveway located in front of building for parking and additional parking space for existing garden apartments.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Should I open?
Yes, please.
Mr. Chairman, members of board, Councils members, Robert Cassio, the firm is Cassio Flacco, 524 Union Avenue in Belleville. I represent the applicant in this matter, KNS LLC. My client is the owners of 486-500 Geralman Street, which is a garden apartment with 29 units. My client is seeking preliminary and final site plan approval in addition to bulk variance release in order to construct a new driveway for one additional parking space. There are 29 units and only 28 spaces. My client seeking approval and the additional parking space so that there be one parking space for each unit. Each rental unit will have their own space. They're one short now. The witnesses you'll hear from are Mark Denner of KNS LLC and Mike Lonzafama, the engineer and planner. Mr. Denner will give a brief history of the property and explain why he needs one more space. Mr. Lonzafama will review the location of property and describe the site. He will also discuss the parking and explain the new proposed space, where it will be located. Mr. Denner.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to cut the truth and help you out? Please state your name and spell your last name.
Mark Denner, D-E-N-N-E-R.
Is it M-A-R-K?
M-A-R-C.
Same. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Denner, what's your business address?
138 Bryant Avenue in Springfield, New Jersey.
And your occupation?
Landlord.
And are you a member of KNS LLC?
I am.
Does KNS LLC own 486-500 Geralman Street?
It does.
And very briefly, what is located on that property?
29 rental units and 28 parking spaces.
And approximately, how old is the complex?
Built in 1964.
And was that built by your family?
My grandparents.
And why is it you're looking for one additional space at this time?
For the last 15 years, there has been one space short. There was a tenant that is handicapped, who was there from my grandmother's time in the 90s. And we never needed his space because he couldn't drive. Now he's getting older and he needs a healthcare aide, and so he requested his space. So we have to give it to him, and we're one space short.
And each tenant has an assigned space?
Assigned, yes.
I have no further questions, this witness.
Anybody on board have any questions? Is that the spot that's in front of the apartment building?
There's one spot there now.
Right.
We just want to add one more.
All right. Do you charge tenants for parking?
No.
No, all right.
Unless they want to somehow put two cars in each, there's no room for that, so.
All right. Perfect.
It's within the rent.
Fine.
I don't think anybody on board has any questions, this witness.
Thank you. Mr. Lonzafama.
Please raise your right hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not to cut the truth and help you out?
I do.
Please state your names, spell your last name.
Sure. Michael Lonzafama, that's L-A-N-Z-A-F-A-M-A. I'm a licensed professional engineer, land surveyor and planner. I'm a principal with the firm of Casey and Keller Incorporated, 258 Main Street.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lonzafama has appeared both with the planning board and zoning board.
Your witness has an expert.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lonzafama, did you prepare the site plan for the proposed additional space?
Yes, we have.
Briefly describe the location of the property.
The property is located on the east side of Geralman Street. It is designated as Lot 45 and Block 4801. It is approximately .86 acres in size. It's located just south of school number seven, down off of Passaic Avenue. It has 29 apartment units located on it and 28 parking spaces, as you've heard before. The property is located in the RG zone, which is the garden apartment zone.
And would you, through you sort of photograph, just briefly describe the property and in particular where the proposed new space will be?
Certainly.
Do you want to mark that council as 1017?
A1.
It's A1 is, I believe, a series of six photographs?
Correct. And they were taken by my office on April 3 of this year.
Mr. Lonzafama, when you review those photographs, just please concentrate on the location of the proposed new space.
Certainly. I have produced. The photographs to my right are marked as Exhibit A1. The center photo is the building directly off of Geralman, where the new parking spot will occur. The photograph to the left, which is designated as Photo Number 1, is just a few of view a little further to the south, excuse me, to the north. And shows the entry driveway to the rear parking area as well as the location of the unit that will be utilizing that parking space. To the right, photograph number three, just gives you a broader view of where an existing parking spot already exists off of Geralman Street. In the bottom portion, the center photo is just an enlarged view of where the vehicle would occur. You can see that there's existing walkways and plantings in that area. As part of our design process, we plan on reconstructing those sidewalk areas to be able to support a vehicle driving over there, creating a curb cut and a turn of the appropriate thickness. This area would be asphalted into a nine-by-20-foot deep space to accommodate a single vehicle. To the left and right of those lower photographs, I believe would be Photograph 4 and 6, it gives you line of side views. This is looking north on Geralman. You can see a good line of sight. And again, in the far right corner, looking south on Geralman, again, you see a straight line, ease of sight. There's no site obstructions that would cause anything that would be problematic for a motor vehicle to pull into or out of a parking spot at that location. It's no different than someone backing out of the residential driveway.
Mr. Lonzafama, what variance are you seeking with regard to this application for this additional parking space?
For this additional parking space, we need a variance for parking in the front yard. It was cited, I believe, by the zoning officer as not having the necessary setback, but I actually think it's Section 23-611, no front yard parking is permitted. As part of the application, we, you know, to construct that parking space, we are adding a pervious surface here. But what we're doing in the back portion of the site, where the parking area exists, we plan on removing asphalt, so there'll actually be a reduction of 224 square feet in impervious coverage on the site. So you're reaping a number of benefits because the site is already non-conforming as to lot coverage and open space requirements. We're actually reducing those non-conformities slightly. We're bringing the site further into compliance with zoning by providing one more parking spot. Under your current zoning ordinance, we're supposed to have 58 parking spaces. We only have 28, so we're getting a little bit closer. Not quite there. But in my opinion, just from a planning perspective, all of these variances could be granted under the C2 criteria of municipal land use law. In my opinion, the benefits outweigh any detriments. You're reducing a number of existing non-conforming conditions, and you're not exacerbating any of the bulk variances that already exist associated with the setbacks from the property line for the buildings. Obviously, there's no adjustment to the building. So long the short of it, in my opinion, I think this would be beneficial not only to the apartment dwellers in this complex, but to the community in general.
Just one last question, Mr. Lonzafama. Is it likely that when this apartment was constructed, that the requirement was not two spaces per unit, but one space per unit?
Most likely, yes.
No further questions, Mr. Chairman.
Any board members have a question, this witness? If not, does anybody in the public have a question or comment of either witness? If not, we'll close the public portion. And would someone like to make a motion?
I'd make a motion, we approve it with variance or whatever you like.
Close, full roll.
Mr. Venero.
Yes.
This is in Algarada.
Yes.
Councilman Kennedy.
Yes.
Mr. Conti.
Yes.
Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
Mrs. Shaw.
Yes.
Mr. Bowe.
Yes.
Mr. Sinabria.
Yes.
Ms. Rico.
Yes.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Someone?
I have a question regarding the chandelier we approved in the parking lot.
Chandelier?
The chandelier. I need to bring this up because other people have brought it up to our, nothing's been done. Now, my only concern.
I've got a sick Frankie on it.
Well, chandelier parking lot, they haven't done anything. And we promised the residents, they said that they would put up, nothing, and that's not paid, nothing's done, and I was just wondering.
Make a motion, Mr. Jarrett?
Second.
Meeting is adjourned.
Thank you very much.